Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas. Today is Tuesday, August the 13th, 2024, and it's 9:00 a.m. We're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We are pleased once again to have the nonofficial official chaplain of the Hood County Commissioners' Court with us, the oath standby here to give us the invocation this morning, Pastor Mike McMahon of Fellowship Church.
Pray with me, please. Father, thank you for your love, for your provision, but America is hurting. Pandemics, racial issues, job loss, political division, they've all caused great suffering. We're called to be the salt and light on the earth, and as Christians, we can begin healing our land through prayer and action. So let us come together not just by words, but by a faith that produces works. The love and grace of God can begin the turning of tide in America. But we look to you and to you only, Lord. Help us make wise decisions that move our country in the right direction. Help us to do our part in praying and in staying with what we know is right according to the truth of your word. Teach us to make our actions count, our words matter, and then line them both up to your sense of righteousness, not ours. Guide us with your eye, grip us with your strong arm. Teach us what we need to know to make our lives and our nation count for you. In Jesus' name, amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the pledge of the Lone Star State.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one and indivisible.
Okay. Before we get started, I want to remind everybody that if you want to make an open comment on the citizens' comments at large, you must fill out a public participation form, hand it to Sheriff Deeds, and he will hand it to the clerk, who will then hand it to me. And also, for citizens' comments pertaining to agenda items, you must have the participation form filled in before we get to the agenda item that you wish to discuss. If not, you will not be allowed to speak. So please pay attention and look at the agenda if you want to speak. All right. For a special presentation today, we're very pleased with us to have Holly Watts here, who is the chairperson of the Hood County Substance Abuse Council, to have a proclamation. So I'll invite the Commissioners' Court to come down. This is a very nice proclamation. You did a good job. Would you like me to read this?
Do you want me to read it over?
I think that's what you should do.
Okay.
You did such a good job. There's two copies here. We're going to give you the fancy copy, and we'll give this back to the deal. So I'm going to let you read from the beautiful copy.
Okay.
About that.
Okay. Can anybody hear me? I know the microphone isn't with me right now. Oh, we can do. I have no clue. Okay, we're going to go like this. Whereas August 21st, 2024, is established as the national day in remembrance of those lost to illicit fentanyl poisoning and to acknowledge the devastation this drug has brought to hundreds of thousands of affected family members and friends. And whereas this is a day of a coordinated response from fentanyl awareness organizations and affected families sharing their lived experiences as part of a whole group, warning and informing our youth, the public, and the unsuspecting. And whereas Hood County is recognizing the alarming amount of fentanyl-related overdoses in recent months, some resulting in death in our community. And whereas Hood County wishes to recognize those affected locally by the tragedy of fentanyl and bring awareness to the prevention resources available in Hood County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Hood County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim August 21st, 2024, Fentanyl Prevention and Awareness Day in Hood County, Texas. Signed this 13th day of August, 2024, by the county judge and all four commissioners.
Good. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Good job. Good job. You're doing a great job. Okay. No service awards? Okay. So this brings us now to the citizens' comment at large, and I have three speakers lined up. The first speaker is Mr. Jim Bell.
I'll pass.
You'll pass? Okay. The next speaker is Mr. Richard Hoffs. Do I get close this time?
Close enough, Judge. I recognized it. Good morning, Judge, Commissioner. My name is Richard Hayes. Sorry, Judge, it's how my family pronounces it. It looks nothing like it's spelled, so I answer to almost anything.
Okay.
You know, we have a lot of great employees in the county, and a lot of them work in roles that we don't see them a lot. And unfortunately, we only know about them when they don't do a good job. And one employee I'd like to talk about today is Margaret Campbell, the head of our Emergency Operations Center. Margaret maintains a group of volunteers in the county called the CERT team, Community Emergency Response Team. And these are volunteers who she makes sure are trained, trained to help our community in times of emergency or for events. About a week and a half ago, we had the Blazing Saddles '75 Bike Ride, where we had more than 800 bicycle riders riding 800 miles in the August heat. I think they're crazy, but that's my opinion. To ensure their safety, Margaret had a CERT volunteer at each of their rest stops, trained for first aid, trained specifically to recognize heat stress and exhaustion and when they need to be pulled out of the race. So these dozen volunteers were scattered throughout the course to provide safety. In addition, she manned and staffed the Emergency Operations Center. She was there with Sheriff Deeds and some others. So when some events did occur during the race, they were handled immediately and professionally and quickly to enhance the safety of everyone, not just the bike riders, but to minimize the impact on the public as well. I wanted to make sure you know what a great job Margaret is doing and how she's leveraging the volunteers to get maximum impact from what she does. Thank you.
Good. Let's give Margaret Campbell a hand. Okay, the next speaker is Dr. Granik.
I can't top that.
You can't top that. All right, good. All right? All right? Okay. All right. This brings us to the first agenda item, which is discuss and take appropriate action regarding setting the salaries of elected officials pursuant to Local Government Code May convene into executive session. I want you to know that we worked for about four hours yesterday in a workshop discussing the salaries of elected officials here. Does anybody here wish to take a stab at setting the salaries? I guess it's in two parts. We got a...
...individual that wanted to do open comments. It wasn't marked on there.
It wasn't?
It just wasn't marked the agenda item. It wasn't marked on there. So I was sure, apparently it's on.
They brought in their own. Well, we haven't gotten in. Yeah, okay. Christian Sanego?
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your time. I really appreciate it. Something that's been on my heart for a long time because I've been working on it, and it seems like it needs more attention to it because it's not going anywhere. And that is, I have a great concern regarding the state of our streets and roads in the city and also in the county. I've listed just a few of the issues that are out there, and I've been kind of like the eyes on the road for various different organizations, but not getting anywhere. One is Davis Road off of 377. It's falling apart. It's like a lumpy mattress, and I reported it months ago, but it has yet to be fixed. James Road off of 377 has been an issue for four to five years. I've reported it over and over and over again. Tech Dot has already shaved off of it, I know, because I work with them. But the city had a two-year warranty on it. They did not take advantage of fixing it. It's an issue of the foundation of the road. Now, if there's an avalanche of rain, it's like a lake. And those unexpected drivers who are not used to it, they're in trouble because they go into this deep water. So it's a safety issue, but I can't seem to get anybody to stand up and take ownership of the problem. James Road from North Gate to Highway 4, it's falling apart. You either drive on the far right and risk of falling off the edge, or on the far left in the middle of the road, and you wind up risking that you get sideswiped by the car that's oncoming. I reported it. I found out who's in charge, the head person supposedly of the county. I'm not even getting a phone call back to indicate as far as what the heck is going on with it. North Houston, I hope someone from the city is here, but it can also be something to do with the county, and hopefully you can add some weight to it. Railroad track crossing is in deplorable state, and it's very unsafe. It's been falling apart for years and years, and it's getting worse. Again, the unexpected driver, I don't care if he's going 30, 25, or 50, he's going to risk having damage to his car because it's that bad. King Plaza, I brought this up years ago, right here at the Commissioners' Court. It's a tug-of-war between the city and the county about fixing that street. Cowpatty patches are not going to do the job. I call it cowpatty because what it is, is you put a little bit of glue in there, but in the next rain, it falls apart again. I can't seem to get the city and the county to come to an agreement to fix that road. I tell you, people have fallen. People have gotten hurt on that road because the potholes are so deep. You can count your blessings as a city and a county that you have not gotten hit with a lawsuit. And how long is this going to continue? I mean, there's traffic, foot traffic on that street all the time. The other one, and those are like just some of the examples, that it needs more attention. The frustrating part about it is, is you talk to the city, and they say, well, no, it's the county. You talk to the county, and they send you to the city. And then you wind up talking to Tech Dot. Tech Dot's the only one that actually returns phone calls and gets things fixed. But the other things, it's always like it's one or the other, and there's always excuses. In the meantime, things continue deteriorate. Things get bad. I've recently been to Weatherford, and I was so totally surprised that the roads are really nice. They're paved. There's no potholes. The street signage is really nice. It's really amazing. And, you know, for Granbury being the celebration hall of Texas, how about putting a little effort into some of the foundation of the city of the county so that when our visitors come, they don't have to rumble over some terrible streets, railroad tracks and things like that? Or the other thing is, is why not have a point of contact? Well, you can call in when you find problems with the roads, and they can go to the different entities who are responsible for it. I don't know. But we need to do something about the roads and the city, not just in the county, but also in the city. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that is all. All right. Now, first item is to discuss and take appropriate action regarding setting the salaries of elected officials pursuant to Local Government Code 152.013. May convene into executive session. As I was saying, the Commissioners' Court met yesterday in a workshop for about three hours discussing this. Does any Commissioner pursuant to that workshop would like to make a motion? I thought, you know, we got a, I think we got, we discussed having a blanket raise, and then through your good work, you have also done kind of an outliers type of a schedule where people didn't quite fit in to the normal progression in a department, and were certain deals, and you did a great job on doing that. And then you got a matrix for the Sheriff's Department, too. So with doing that, I mean, it was a great discussion, and we covered a lot of ground. And I know Stephanie Matlock, our new auditor, had worked with us and was able to really pull up and give us a lot of information, that she had worked diligently on this budget as well.
Yeah. Commissioner Andrews has devoted hours to kind of reconstructing the salary matrix for the county. So he's done a really good job of trying to simplify it.
Well, I appreciate that. Yeah, that, so, yeah, with that, I'll make the motion that we set the elected salaries at a 3% increase over last year.
Second. Okay. A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to increase the salaries of the elected officials to 3%, second by Commissioner Wilson. As a little background on that is that the Commissioners' Court, this is the first time in, what, five years or last year? I mean, since we've been on the bench, there's only been one raise in five years. We haven't had any kind of a raise at all, and everybody knows what this is. So this is something that's been long overdue, and I think because we have a lot of people that have positions in the county, like the auditor, environmental, development, purchasing, election minister, we've got to give them increases to keep competitive with other counties to keep them from poaching our good employees here. But they're making as right at what the Commissioners are making. So this is just a circle that you have to keep up with. We didn't do this for a long time, but I think this is something that's really, really long overdue. One raise in five years is just really not that much. So with that, that's my discussion on the thing. Anybody else anything to say?
Yes, Judge. I, too, want to echo Commissioner Samuelson's comments about the efforts that Commissioner Andrews has put in. He's actually distilled several things, and, you know, I hope this doesn't come across wrong. Simplified, if the government can simplify something, he's simplified our past salary matrix, I think. We'll see how, as time goes by, of course, how it's going to play out. But I like what I saw yesterday, and we're tasked with the duty of doing what we can to make sure we keep good employees, and yet we are mindful of the taxpayers are paying for it. And so there's always a, we're always walking a line, what's for the, looking out for the taxpayers, but making sure that we've got good employees here that are doing the job. And so, again, Commissioner Andrews has spent a huge amount of time on this, and he's done a really good job, in my opinion. And of course, time will tell us how good a job it is as we go on for the next year or two. But I have to, and the judge is correct, we've refrained from giving raises to the elected officials over the years, the last, since I've been on this court. And with reluctance, sometimes we just have to do it to keep everybody in line. So, again, my hat's off to Commissioner Andrews for the hard work that he has done.
And I will second that because after the time that we spent in exec session yesterday, it was quite evident the amount of work and labor that he had put in to balance the metrics that we had. And I think everyone in the county employment will see benefit from that, not only in the near term, but in the long term, the way it's structured out. And I, again, you know, commend him for the efforts that he put into it.
Just so everyone understands, Ms. Matlock, so after this vote, if, you know, we still have a ways to go on the budget. We're going to have a proposed budget, but we still have some work to do over the next few weeks. Will this be able to change, or is this set now?
So we are setting it now. There will be a public hearing at the next court in August, and then if you elect to make changes, you will have to have another public hearing regarding the changes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, since this is kind of, I mean, it's not early because it's August 7th, but we have until the end of September to set the final budget. I just wanted to make sure that there was, that that was clear.
Yeah, you have until the fiscal starts to have an adopted budget in place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Okay. Item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to set a proposed tax rate for the tax year 2024, fiscal year 2025. This was also discussed yesterday in a workshop that was open there, and I see Fay was there and Richard Hoffs. Do I get closer this time? Hoffs? Hoffs?
Hayes.
Hayes.
Kind of like hay with an F.
Okay, Richard, one of these days I'm going to get it right. So we really kicked this around for a long time yesterday, too. So, Ms. Auditor, you were there with us pushing all of it out. I think that the proposed tax rate that was discussed at that time was an amount. We didn't take any action because it was a workshop, but we did a bunch of scenarios about what it would take to cover the increased costs, and everybody realizes that there is increased cost and that we're going to really have to increase the tax rate, which, again, this Commissioners' Court has kept the tax rate. In fact, we've lowered it, I guess, in the last, twice, since I've been on the court, since we, well, since Commissioner Eagle and myself have been in court, and Commissioner Andrews I have, and then with Jack and all of us. So we've lowered it. But this year, we're going to have to raise it. And what was the rate that we figured, Ms. Auditor, that would cover the increased cost and adding what we're going to do, like insurance is going up, a lot of things is going up, that it's kept the same services, the same everything. There's a huge increase. Like all of y'all know, when you go to the grocery store, I see you shaking your head, yes, ma'am. I see it, too. I went to the grocery store the other day. I never go to the grocery store, but it was shocking. But anyway, what was the rate that we?
The rate that was discussed was .309524.
And with that rate, that would kind of give us enough room that with the sources of income that the county has to try to keep a balanced budget. Am I correct?
That's right. There's still some more conversations that need to happen, but I think that's a great starting point.
Great starting point. Any other Commissioner have anything to say about this?
Yeah, and I, it's always, there's a lot of, there are a lot of factors going on on this. This is a very multi-variable equation. And one of the things that we had discussed yesterday is the tax rate needs to match the budget that we have proposed right now. It makes sense. That's how you achieve that budget. So we still have a lot of work to do on the budget, and this rate is absolutely, we, there's plenty of opportunity for this rate to go down. So I feel that it makes more sense to propose the rate high and then come down than to propose the rate low, come in a little bit later, and have to raise that up. So right now, this matches the budget that we have, and that seems like the best place to start. And again, all of this is proposed, none of this is locked in, and it's still plenty of opportunity to whittle that down.
Right. We haven't yet got all the information on the other sources of revenue. We haven't nailed that down as far as sales tax and other sources of revenue that may be able to lower that or even look at areas to where things can be, money can be saved, vendor contracts, different things like that, where we can potentially save some money. So I'm not real comfortable with this number, and I'm really looking forward to working, getting our pencils out and figuring out how to get it lower.
Can I throw something in?
Of course.
So this is a preliminary, I want to put a lot of disclaimers on what's going on today because this is not setting the rate. It's setting a proposed rate, and we are going to be coming back to it, and we don't have all the numbers yet. But to give a, to give you a comparison, last rate, the tax rate, last year, the tax rate per $100 valuation was .282258. Is that correct, Ms. Auditor?
Right, .2622.
28 what?
26.
Who's counting, though, you know? But, and so this proposed rate is 30952. So you're looking at about a cent and a half increase on the rate per hundred compared to last year. However, in an effort to be fully transparent, our no-new tax rate would be lower than that based on the val, based on the valuations this year and incoming new properties getting on the, there's, we have a finite amount of real estate in this, in the county, right? It's bounded, the same amount of real estate we've always had, but they're subdividing and adding neighborhoods and so forth. So that increases the flow into the tax rolls. So there, and as you have people come in, that's automatically, or obviously, that's going to bring up the inflow of revenue, whether, leaving the rate constant. So we may end up at the end of the day with a little disagreement on what we think, what we, what we think the rate ought to be. So, but this right now is just to get something on paper. I'm not real comfortable with this either, this particular rate. So I think we do, and there's, if the, if the cost goes up, if you have to add employees, for instance, or if you have to add new equipment into your, and to provide the services that we add, and it exceeds last year's budget, for instance, or last year's cost, we got two things we can do. We can either find somewhere to cut, or we have to raise taxes a little bit. And that's always a dilemma that an elected official is in who is setting tax rates. So don't get too, please don't get, take this one as a solid number today because this is preliminary. And with all those disclaimers, then I just want you to know that coming from this part of the Commissioners' Court, this seat. Thank you.
And just realize that this is the first year that the 10% homestead exemption took effect, which we knew would yield a lower amount. But that forces us to be much more scrutinizing of expenses, which is a good thing, right? We want to be scrutinizing the expenses that the taxpayers are paying for. So this is the first year that that has taken, that the taxable value for the general fund is impacted by that 10% homestead exemption. So it's good for the taxpayers because they got the 10% homestead exemption, and it makes us work harder. it makes us work harder to make sure that we are doing the best that we can with the funds that are in the tax rate. So, still more work to do. We had a really good session yesterday, but we've got some work to do to get this lower.
I've got one more point. And, you know, I can, I stand, you can correct me if I'm off here, but I think roughly, the total valuation this year from last year went up, for all properties, about 3%. Now, I know some people may have had, when they got their, when they look at their tax bill, that it could've gone, could go up more, some could go up less, but the overall, total taxable property value went up 3%. So, if we, we, just staying along with that, there's, we gotta find 3% somewhere. Anyway.
One other thing, as, you know, Commissioner Eagle stated, this is preliminary, and, but it's also required by state statute that we establish, you know, the preliminary rate in a certain timeline, so that's the reason it is, has to be established today.
I guess, just.
So, with that, do I hear a motion?
Can I do the comparison real quick? The comparison, so last year, the average home value was 330,687, and at the tax rate, the point two eight two six two two, the tax was $934.59. At the proposed rate of point three oh nine five two, the average home value went up to 334,000. The tax would be $1,033.80, which is an increase of $99.20. But we're working on that.
Okay, with that, do I hear a motion?
Is that number three oh nine?
On what?
Three oh nine.
I move that we set the proposed tax rate for tax year 2024, fiscal year 2025, at point three zero nine five four.
Five four?
Five two or five four?
Five two.
Five two? Okay, I stand corrected. Three, at point three zero nine five two.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Wilson to set the proposed tax rate for tax year 2024, fiscal year 2025, at point three oh nine five two point four, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item, item three, discuss and take appropriate action to set the date for a public hearing on the 2025 proposed budget and 2024, well, it should be just the opposite, and, yeah, 2024 proposed budget and 2025 tax year, proposed tax rate for August the 27th, 2024. And again, this is just where we're gonna have a public hearing on that date, that's required by law. So, it's gonna be at the next Commissioner's Court on August the 27th, when we're gonna have a public hearing, which is required by state law. So, that's all we're gonna do at that hearing. So, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Judge, I'll make a motion that we set, the next Commissioner's Court, August 27th, 2024, for a public hearing on the 2025 proposed budget and 2024 tax year proposed tax rate.
Flip-flop.
I think that's correct.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously, five two. Five zero. Sorry, just kidding.
We have seven people.
All right, item number four has been pulled. Thank you, Leland, for working that out. Item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the purchase, including any required signatures, of a 20 by 15 bronze plaque for $1,115, or a 16 by 12 bronze plaque for $685, to be placed next to the District Clerk's Office in the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center, honoring the service of Tona Lynn Newman, to be paid from general contingency. We have already passed a resolution or an order here by the Commissioner's Court to honor Tona Lynn Newman for her 33 years of service as a district clerk. But now, we got the specific details of the plaque that we voted on, and so they're, of course, two different sizes with two different amounts. So, Glenn has done the research on this, so thank you very much, Mr. Tillman, for doing that, and, as I stated, what the sizes and costs are.
Yes, morning, Judge Commissioners. As you stated, this was approved in a previous court to get a plaque, so I got some multiple bids, and these were the lowest prices for bronze plaques in those two sizes. So, if y'all would decide which y'all would like, and we also needed to determine the funding source for that, so that's why it's here today.
Okay. Does anybody have any preference about the, the size of it? I know, Leland, you came up here and measured the plaques, did you? And did some sort of, maybe if you can tell us what your just observation, I know you're not an interior designer, although you're doing a fabulous job as Facilities Director here.
Depends on the space that it's gonna be in, because it needs to look appropriate to the space.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner, Judge, the wall we're intending to install that plaque on is a blank wall. There's nothing else mounted in that section of wall. My opinion, the bigger size would probably be more aesthetically pleasing. The smaller size might look too small in that empty space.
That's what I was thinking, and you kinda looked at, kinda measured it, and looked at it, and saw. So, okay. Well, good. With that, I make a motion that the, we authorize a purchase of the 20 by 15 bronze plaque for $1,115, to be placed in, next to the District Clerk's Office in the Ralph H. Walton Justice Center, honoring the service of Tona Lynn Newman, to be paid from, is it general contingency? Is that where it come from? From general contingency. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion?
I've just got a comment. This is one of those issues, it's a struggle for me. And it has nothing to do with Ms. Newman. I just question whether this is our place as a government to do this, and spend taxpayer And I know, at the risk of sounding like, well, there he goes again, I'm just questioning whether this is our place to spend taxpayer money. It seems to me like that the taxpayers out here could get together and do this, but that's just my comment.
Well, I think, what we said at the beginning, the Commissioner's Court has already passed the resolution or voted to go ahead and do this for Tona, and for it to be paid from the general contingency.
Yeah, and I probably voted for it, so.
So, we did.
Okay.
Did we?
Well.
You changed your mind?
Yeah. I agree with that.
Thirty-three years is a pretty good time for somebody devoting.
I don't, I don't think this is gonna be something that's gonna happen every month or every year, or anything like that, so. It's, it is, you know, if that were the case, I would be a little bit more worried about the taxpayer money. It is, it is taxpayer money going to do this, she had 30 years of service.
Yeah, the next person for, working for the county elected official that works 33 years, I'll pay it out of my own pocket for our plaque for $1,015, okay? Because this doesn't come in a blue moon. I remember the pastor at my church one time, there was a couple that had a wedding announcement, but they'd been married for 70 years, so he announced it in the congregation. And so, he prefaced this by saying, if anybody else reaches 70 years, I'll give you a public acknowledgement, too. But we haven't had one since then, so.
Well, be careful, Chad Jordan's almost there.
Yeah. So, 33 is a pretty good, solid number there, though.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. All right. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Well, it carries five zero. All right, item number six, consider and take appropriate action to authorize a county judge to sign the interlocal cooperation contract between Hood County Sheriff's Office and Pecan Valley Mental Health MR Region to provide payment for transportation services for individuals experiencing a mental health crisis event. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge Commissioners, this is the same document that they put forward every, every year, what we came up with, it's been 10 or 12 years ago, I think, when we came up with this, that they'd pay up to $20,000 for mileage, and we transport mental health people to hospitals, and that goes back into the general fund, and so it just helps cover some of those costs. So, it's an annual contract.
Well worth it, too. And the Sheriff's Office and Coke Beatty's office work well together, so this is a good deal. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize a county judge to sign the interlocal cooperation contract between Hood County Sheriff's Office and Pecan Valley MHMR Region to provide payment for transportation services for individuals experiencing a mental health crisis event.
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to authorize a county judge to sign the interlocal cooperation contract between the Sheriff's Office and Pecan Valley to provide payment for transportation services for individuals experiencing a mental health crisis event, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Next item, you wanna go ahead and, well, this is, this is not yours, I guess, but Coke Beatty, let me, this is, again, Coke Beatty, but he sent a letter to me, and this is where he wants to appoint Ed Selheimer, who's a longtime attorney here, very respected attorney, who served multiple terms as a trustee for the Pecan Valley Centers, and Coke Beatty really wants to keep him, so you agree with.
If you wanted my input on that, I've been appointed on that board for, I think it's six years now, something like that, as a non-voting member, but Mr. Selheimer, he does a fantastic job, working behind the scenes, helping, and at the, at the meetings, so I would definitely ask that you reappoint him.
Yes.
And didn't, didn't Mr. Selheimer retire in the last couple of years from the practice?
Yes, yes.
So, he's got plenty of time.
He's got plenty of time.
He missed the last meeting, though. He must've been.
What are you gonna do?
You didn't have to say that, Sheriff. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve, you know, Coke Beatty's request to reappoint Ed Selheimer for a term of two years as trustee for Pecan Valley Centers for Behavioral and Developmental Healthcare, to serve September 1, 2024, to August 31, 2026.
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Wilson here to confirm Coke Beatty's request to reappoint Ed Selheimer for two years as a trustee for Pecan Valley, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next item, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the Hood County Substance Abuse Council to use purple lighting, fabric ribbons, four 6 by 2 wooden ribbons, and a banner at the historical courthouse, beginning on August 26 through August 31, to bring awareness to International Overdose Awareness Day on August 31, 2024. Additionally, allow the use of the gazebo for candlelight vigil from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on August the 31st. That's part of your doing, again, on that thing, Ms. Watts?
Yeah.
I think we allow that every year. I think it's a real big deal. I think you do a good job, and y'all set it up, and y'all take it down in accordance with this. Am I right?
Yes, sir, that is correct. It's basically the same setup that we did last year. It's just this year, we're adding the four 6 by 2 wooden ribbons. They're the same size as what the Children's Advocacy Center uses for their Child Abuse Prevention Month. And the candlelight vigil is just six to eight. This is just a day for people who have lost someone due to overdose, to just come through and remember them. So, it's pretty much the same setup, and we put it up the 26th, take it down the 31st.
Good. It looks good, and I think it does bring an awareness. Thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow the Hood County Substance Abuse Council to use purple lighting, fabric ribbons, four 6 by 2 wooden ribbons, and a banner at the historical courthouse, beginning August 26 through August 31, to bring awareness to International Overdose Awareness Day on August 31, 2024. Additionally, allow the use of the gazebo for a candlelight vigil from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on August 31, 2024.
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to allow the Hood County Substance Abuse Council to use the purple lighting, like it's normally done at the historical courthouse on the dates as stated, to bring awareness to International Overdose Awareness Day on August the 31st, 2024, and to use the gazebo for candlelight vigil from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM on August the 31st, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number nine, discuss and take appropriate action to approve adjusting the agenda item deadline due to holiday schedule for the following Commissioner's Court meeting dates. For the hearing date on December the 20th of 2024, the items will be due on Friday, December the 13th of 2024, at noon. For the meeting on June 24th, 2025, the items will be due Tuesday, June the 17th, 2025, at noon. For the meeting on July the 8th, 2025, the items will be due on June the 30th, 2025, at noon. Anybody have any discussion about these dates? I think we've already decided on the dates, and these are just when the items will be due, so we can get the agenda properly prepared and posted in accordance with the deadlines. So, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve adjusting the agenda item deadline due to the holiday schedule for the following Commissioner's Court meeting dates. December 20th, 2024, items due Friday, December 13th, 2024, at noon. June 24th, 2025, items due Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, at noon. July 8th, 2025, items due Monday, June 30th, 2025, at noon.
Second.
Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to adjust the agenda item deadline in accordance to what she's just stated. And I've just read it to the record, and that Commissioner Eagle has just read. I'm not gonna bore y'all reading it again on the thing, okay? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. All right, item number 10, discuss and take appropriate action regarding requested closure dates for the library that coincide with the county holiday schedule and closure dates for annual inventory and training. There you go. Hello, Jennifer Lockston. This, ladies and gentlemen, is our esteemed librarian, who does a fabulous job here for Hood County.
Thank you.
Ms. Lockston, how are you doing?
I'm good. Thank you for listening to me today, and thank you for our staff day that we had yesterday. We got so much accomplished, and I think it was good for us to kinda boost our morale and get going for more programming. We kinda get burnt out a little bit after doing all of our summer reading stuff, so it was kind of a nice thing. These are dates that we typically close, because the county holidays are a Monday through Friday thing, and we're open over the weekend, then we try to go ahead and close. It doesn't take anybody's leave or vacation time. It doesn't take anybody's leave or vacation time or anything like that. So they will be closed on the Saturday of Thanksgiving, and then those few days there in December, Easter weekend, and then we always kind of close around the big hoopla that happens on the square around July 4th because we don't ever have a place to park. So we go ahead and just close. And then we went ahead and built in a staff day again for next August.
Okay. So with the, so these are the dates that you want in addition to the regular Hood County holiday schedules?
Correct.
Which is on Thanksgiving, only on Saturday, November 30. And then for inventory and training, on December 23, and then December 26 to the 28, correct? And then Easter weekend, you want to close on April 14 on that Saturday?
Yes.
And then Independence Day Square celebration, I agree with you, it's a madhouse around here, so Saturday, July 5 of 2025. And then you want a staff day on Monday, August 11, 2025.
Yes.
A second. Okay, good. And with that, any further discussion? All those in favor of this modified schedule of closure dates for the Hood County Library, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Fine, you got it unanimous. Got it right here for you. Okay. All right. Item 11 has been pulled. Thank you. Number 12. Okay, item number 12. Discuss and take appropriate action to accept the quote and purchase the Dexter T900 60-pound capacity washer for the jail with a warranty that includes three machines. Sheriff Deeds.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. That jail up there runs 24/7, every day of the week, every night. We have them washing clothes.
Thank you.
The uniforms that they wear, and drying them every day, during the day that they're down. Those are the original washers in there. A while back, we replaced the dryer. When the director for maintenance came to me, then I thought that was a great idea because the cost to repair one of them was going to be $6,800, I believe what it was quoted, and no warranty or anything like that. So for them being this old, and that's why I come to you and asked to replace all three and just get it done.
Anybody have any question or comment for the sheriff?
Yeah, I did send a note last week that the quote expired on Sunday. Did we get a new quote?
I don't think we got a new quote, but I, that government, Director of Government Sales, Sean Allen, that company, only being a day or two over, there shouldn't be any problems. I think we can-
Glenn? This quote expired on the 11th, which I had commented on a couple, a few days ago, but...
Oh, okay. I wasn't, actually, I wasn't aware of that, but I highly doubt they'll change it for one, not-
I'm sure they will.
It'll be a difference for one day.
Yeah.
We've dealt with them before, and it's not had any issues.
And so are they-
Especially with its warranty.
Yeah. And so these, all three dryers are in, unable to be repaired, is that correct?
Washers.
Oh, I'm sorry, washers. Thinking of the dryer that we had the last few-
They could be repaired, but they're living on borrowed time and no warranty. So these guys work on them all the time, and, you know, they're the experts on all this, so I gotta take their word for it. So it's a lot of money, but then they'll get us way down the road compared to fixing one, and something else might break tomorrow.
Yeah, I think the repair quote here is just to fix the one, and that's $6,800, which is, you know, over, well, half the price of a new unit, so with no warranty, and who knows what breaks next, so.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Well, we haven't talked about where the funds are coming from. We have about $1 million left in Fund 55, if you wish to go that route. Is the fund that's for abandoned vehicles, what is that used for?
For paying the wrecker bills when we have vehicles towed for rest, for wrecks, for evidence, for a lot of things. So we've got to keep money in there so we can pay those bills. And over the years, I've used the extra for equipment, for the deputies, other things that we've needed.
Mm-hmm. There's about $120,000 in there right now, so.
Well, we go through a lot of, wreckers are coming in and going out all the time. I don't want to run short. I'll do whatever will help the, help the court. It's county building, county equipment. That's not county money, but, you know, if I have to, I have to. Not happy, but I'll, that'll save the Fund 55 money for when I reaffirm that I need-
When you need trucks and things, I mean, the trucks and other vehicles come out of Fund 55, right?
Yeah. So if I need to, I'll, I'll do that.
Mr. Eagle, were you about to say something?
Well, I just, I don't know what happened to our screens, but, but it's up on the, it's up there so you can see, but, so we're talking about $13,800 washers. And there's, and there's three of them on the agenda, which would be a total of a little over $39,000. So that's what the, that's what's on this proposal today, correct? And if, we can always do a contingent on maintaining this quote, so if, if it's out of date, so. If you need three of them, you need three of them.
But that, that will, there's no, that's all of the washers, so that will replace all of the washers in, okay?
Yes.
They'll all be up to-
Three washers, three dryers, that'll replace all the washers.
Okay.
And one of the washers already, you know, pretty much dead? I mean, it's not, you know-
The one that needs $6,000 in repairs?
Is the one quoted $6,800, that washer is dead right now. It's not able to be used.
That's what I thought, but yeah.
So we definitely need one, and so it's a matter of going ahead and picking up the other two. Are you spending a lot of maintenance on the other two?
The other two, we have quotes out to get repaired that are under $1,000 each. When I had this quote drawn up, it was under the hopes of getting three, at best one machine. As far as I can tell, these machines are original to the building, so they're pushing 30 years old now. Any money we invest into them further, I don't think we would get in return.
Fair enough.
They were scrap metal, I guess.
Yeah. You could take them.
Anyway, so yeah, I definitely need to, want to replace all three of them, and if I need to, I'll pay for it out of them.
Well, that should be done by the county. I mean, the state law requires the county to keep up the jail, and the jail, that, those washing machines up there, they're used constantly up there, the towels and the sheets and stuff, that's just part of the operation of the jail. That shouldn't come out of the wrecker fund that's been used for years to keep that going on. I think it should definitely come out of Fund 55. It's $39,000 out of that. Don't you agree, Ms. Monitor? I mean, it doesn't make any difference to you, but let's leave the wrecker fund away, leave it the way it is and just pay it out of Fund 55. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I don't disagree with you on that, Judge, and I'll make a motion to pay the, buy the three new washing machines for $39,159 out of Fund 55.
Second. Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Andrews to purchase the three washing machines out of Fund 55 for what, $79,159? Second by Commissioner Wilson. Three, three of them. Three. Washing dryers. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. 13. Discuss and take appropriate action to transfer funds to cover out-of-county inmate costs through the remainder of the fiscal year in the amount of $400,000. Sheriff Deeds.
Judge Commissioners, this is on the screen behind you. I guess I might have individual sheets like this if you want to have your own, but we look at this monthly and for most of the, since last winter, so April was 167, 920, May 186, 445, and it just keeps staying up there. After I came to court, I guess that was a month ago, and then asked for 800,000, we got 400,000. Within a week, we spent, I think it was 127,000, so it hit it real hard, real fast. We're pretty much out of money and still got August bills and September to go, so unfortunately, and I don't think we can even pay all of last month's bill when they all come in. So I'm asking for, we were trying to figure that, 300 and some. Commissioner Wilson asked for even more. You know, if we don't use it all, then you get it back, but it goes back into the general fund, so I'd be good with the 400,000. Sorry about that, but with the females especially, we've been running 63 females in the system. We can only hold 20 up here, so the only place that's taking any females is Johnson County right now, so they're one of the most expensive, but...
They're $105 a day, aren't they?
That doesn't start until October 1st, so just 100.
October 1st, still $100 a day?
Just 100.
There were some, apparently some invoices that hadn't hit yet the last time you were at court.
Yes.
Which they all hit the next week after.
Days after.
Yeah.
Yeah, before the end of that week.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we transfer funds to cover the out-of-county inmate costs through the remainder of the fiscal year in the amount of $400,000 coming from Fund 55.
Okay. A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to transfer funds to cover the out-of-county inmate costs through the remainder of the fiscal year in the amount of $400,000 from Fund 55. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Five zero. Thank you, Sheriff. All right. 14. Discuss and take appropriate action to hire a recruit deputy who is already enrolled in a law enforcement academy for an open patrol deputy position at Deputy Step 1 Pay. Sheriff Deeds.
This person, we've, over the years, we've hired some people that hadn't no experience as far as being a deputy, and we had to send them, pay for the money to send them to the academy, and wait for the time for them to get done, and then get them into field training. This particular person, he works for parole right now, and he has been a big asset to us with getting us information, helping us when we're looking for people that have taken off on warrants, things of that nature. So we know the caliber of person we're getting, he's a great guy. He paid for himself to go to the academy because he wanted to get away from working for the state. So he's just about done with that academy, so I don't have to pay for the academy. We're only going to have him under us for a month and a half, two months, before we can get him on the street. So I'd ask that you approve me hiring this recruit deputy, and then when he's done, it'll be Deputy Step 1, but we pay him as of the time it's approved.
When does he graduate?
I didn't write down that date, but I think it's, well, it's within two months, I believe.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't get that date.
Your email says he'll graduate in September.
Yeah, okay. I didn't remember the exact date, but I think it's the middle of the month, so about two months away. And I was wanting to get with you, I guess it's not on the agenda now to talk about, but the, in the past, we paid them a set fee for going to school, but that's kind of outdated. We, in the last session, we had some that lost money to go to school, and it was hard on their families to get it by, but we've already got that slot approved for them when they get done with the academy to go in as a patrol deputy. So, you know, when we have a chance to do that, I like to change that and get it, just pay him as Deputy Step 1. But anyway, that's not on the agenda for today, but, so for this person, I'd like to be able to hire this guy and keep him because he'll go somewhere, and he'll make a good hand for somebody. So I'd like to get him.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. So if he's coming in at Deputy Step 1 Pay, and he's new, why, why is it on the agenda?
Because he's a recruit right now.
Okay.
Recruit scale.
Okay.
So... Okay, do I hear a motion?
Well, is this an SB 22 position?
It is.
Yeah.
Okay. So this would be SB 22 funds, and that's kind of, kind of at your discretion, I mean, with, you know, yeah, I'll make the motion that we allow this, this one to go to Deputy Step Pay, Step 1 Pay for the remainder of the academy out of the SB 22 funds.
Second.
Is that where we need to be on that? All right.
Yes, thank you.
I'll second that. Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Andrews to hire a recruit deputy who's enrolled at the Law Enforcement Academy for an open patrol deputy position at Deputy Step 1 Pay, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, item 15. Discuss and take appropriate action to adopt an order calling a bond election to be held on November 5, 2024. Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, this order is for an election on November 5, 2024, to authorize the county to issue bonds in the amount, not to exceed 50 million, for the purpose of building additional jail space of 209 beds, and then refurbishing the current facility, which is 192 beds. This is the actual, the quote that will be on the ballot issuance of bonds in the amount not to exceed 50 million for expansion and renovation of the county's law enforcement center and jail, and the levy of taxes sufficient to pay the principal and interest on the bonds. That is the quote that will, he will propose to be on the ballot. The current jail facility is, like I said, 192 beds, was built in 1995. We, the county, started shipping prisoners out of county in 2000, and we've shipped them out pretty much every day since. And as you just witnessed, we had to move additional money to cover the out-of-county expenses to get us through this fiscal year, and I'm hoping that will be a sufficient amount. But the voters will have the option on November 5 to say yea or nay on this issue, but we will, you know, otherwise we'll continue to have to pay for out-of-county housing, you know, of our inmates. The build time is somewhere between 24 and 30 months to build the 209 facility, and then, you know, the refurb of the current facility will start after that. And with that, I make a motion that we adopt an order calling for a bond election to be held on November 5, 2024.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Do we have any speakers? Speakers?
Oh. God, I thought we were going to get away with not you having to see you today, Mr. Ferris, and you come in at the last second and make it right on time. David Ferris, don't tell me you have a degree in architectural jail design, do you?
No, I do not.
Okay.
But the thing about it, that one actually caught me, my eye, and was the reason I hurried to come down. The thing that caught my eye was the number 50 million. That's too round of a number, okay? I, you know, and from what I read, it was ambiguous of what it was for. I will say, based on your comments, it sounds like you're adding 290 cells.
209, 209.
Okay, 209, doesn't matter, you're adding that, and that's to cover some refurbishment of the existing one as well, which has however many beds, which I think it was like a-
192.
192.
192, so that would be a total of-
401.
401, okay. I am much better off now, however, I'm kind of still curious as to, you know, how much for refurbishment, because it's a round number, so I'm-
Well, it's not too- Well, it's not to exceed.
And I do understand that, yes, sir. So I'm kind of curious as to how you know that will cover the cost, or will there be extreme cost overruns, things of that nature, all right? It seems rushed, especially with the architectural plans coming up and a for, item coming up designs. I'm wondering if this is a, and I know November fifth is coming up, but maybe in a special or whatever, but for me, I'd like to see that. My other question is, I am really curious, and I haven't had a chance to look for it, I'm not certain it's available. I'm really curious as to what the demographics are of those that are in the Hood County jail. What's the average sentence? What are the average crimes committed? Because my concern when I saw it was low security addition to the existing one, which should be higher security, et cetera. You know, if people are only in there for a week, or five days for whatever, or what the average term is, I have no idea what that is.
I think that in general, that I can say this, these are, these are people that you don't want on the street.
Very good.
And.
My last, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're going through the process, and these are, this is not a medium security build, correct? This is, this is a maximum, I mean, this is concrete walls and metal bars, right? This is not drywall and, you know.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think that this is a.
And right now, we, in the current facility, we have a mixture of both anywhere from minimum to maximum in the facility, and some of the people that we're shipping to other counties are in that same category.
Yeah, okay, that does make me feel a lot better, but hopefully there is some thought as to where would you keep minimum security and whatever a cheaper, if possible, is versus the maximum security. I'm just hoping that's been. And the last thing I would say is about demographics, things of that nature, what is the percentage of illegal immigrants that are held in county jails, because there may be resolutions to those coming up?
Right now, there's a total of four, and they're on other, you know, they're in there for, in the county jail right now for other crimes, and, you know, ICE cannot pick them up until such time as, you know, they're dealt with at the county level.
Yep, absolutely, okay. Based on that number, I've gotten the information that I'm looking for, and I'm not really, as long as the number of fifty million is reviewed and looks good, I'm.
We do have an estimate from DRG, high-level estimate, our architects, Mr. Gondek's in the back. What we talked about, I don't know, a month or so ago, when the motion was made to go forward with this, is if, you know, it's kind of in phases and blocks, the way he's designed it.
Yep.
So if it turns out that we have to shave off a section, or, you probably have a better answer for this, Mr. Gondek, but.
Correct corners.
If there's a way, well, not cut corners, but only do, there's like some flex cells, so maybe we don't do the flex cells.
Yep.
If, if it comes out that to do everything that he's proposed is sixty million, then we have to look, well, we don't, we're not going to be able to do that because our bond is for fifty million.
Right.
So there'll be a point in time where we'll have to make a decision of, okay, we can't do the whole, expand to four-oh-one, so we'll have to either not do the sheriff office additions, or we won't be able to do the flex cells, or, you know, something else. We'll have to figure out what, how to fit it into the, to the bond, but.
Let me, let me answer a couple of your questions.
Okay.
I know that what they've given us is a very high-level estimate.
Absolutely.
You had mentioned, you know, yeah, we're hiring an architect today, or that's on the agenda to do today.
Right.
They haven't, we haven't hired them to start on that process yet.
Right.
It's kind of a, there's a lot of cart and horse here, which one, where, which one do you put where?
And that was.
And what we've got so far is a high level. This is the concept, this is what we're looking to do, and here's the estimated costs. And I promise you, this, this thing, we have gone over with a fine-toothed comb and really made sure that we're doing what's correct for the county. The, the Department of Corrections or, you know, the State Jail Commission has given us projections on the demographics as far as, you know, the population growth and that kind of thing, and they've carried it out to twenty forty. And of course, we know, we all know that those are, you know, less precise the further you get out.
Absolutely.
But, I mean, looking, looking at our history, we've had people out of, out of county a lot, and I think that one of the biggest deals is the female population, that has to be separated by sight and sound, I believe, is, is what they say there. So you have to be able to keep the males and the females completely isolated from each other, and we don't have that ability. The, the design of our jail doesn't allow that with the number of female inmates that we have. So we have to keep a lot of those out of county, and it, you know, there is some cost to that. I've, you know, there's cost to keeping them here also, and that's, that's, I think, one of the, the big contentions that we've struggled with up here. But I think that we've, we've really done our homework on this. We've really gone in and analyzed this, and I, and I think that we are at a point now that this, this is a good place to move forward.
Okay.
And I think that it's very necessary for this county to do so.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
And no, don't have any architectural, but I did spend a number of years doing structural analysis and design, computer programs to do the actual designs and structural engineering. So I do have that background.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, my turn.
All right.
So I got a couple of points here, just, just for statistical information, in risking that I might put you to sleep. In nineteen ninety-five, the population of Hood County was thirty-four thousand. In twenty twenty-two, the population was sixty-six, three seventy-three, and I believe it's more than that now, of course. And so, and this jail was built in nineteen ninety-five, the original facility was built when our population was thirty-four thousand seventy-one. Now, population is a factor in what size a jail ought to be. There, you know, you've got several different factors that you would put into an equation to make a decision. So we've pretty close to doubled our population in the last nearly thirty years. We have taken long, hard looks at the current jail, and we've had an engineer go in and look at the foundation and the structure, et cetera, and it was determined that the current jail, as it is, can be, is not ready to be dozed, in other words. But there's nowhere, no way to fix it until we get prisoners out of it. And, you know, originally, three or four years ago and beyond, we were looking at just building a, excuse me, a four-hundred-plus-bed facility, all brand-new.
Four-thirty-two.
Four-thirty-two, thank you, Commissioner. And so, you know, we've, we've managed to back way off of that, but here's some other items, a couple items that make, give me pause for at least asking questions, and we're going to be asking questions because we've come to a spot where we're going to ask the taxpayers what they think. That's what this is about. A bond issue is about putting it out there and saying, well, what do y'all think? What do y'all think? And, but I, I would request that the county, I got a couple of questions for the county attorney, if you don't mind, sir.
Thirty-seven seconds of notice here, that.
I didn't know I'd be in on this agenda item, so.
Well, so one of the, one of the points, so nineteen ninety-five is when the old jail was built. We can all agree, that's a fact, there's nothing we can do about it, the population, as I've stated, those are facts. The shipping out, according to Commissioner Wilson, we started shipping, having to ship some prisoners out in two thousand, so that was twenty-four years ago. But the question I've got for you while you're standing here, sir, is, I, I got the, the daily jail report today, and it's, at the end of it, it shows that we've got one-hundred-and-seventy-nine males in jail, sixty-one females, either in our jail or outside, I guess all the women are outside.
We're outside.
Oh, seven.
Total of two-hundred-and-forty inmates. And on the first page of our jail report, I'm just reading the words on it, I got traffic offense, ninety-seven days in there. I've got traffic offense, eighty-three, what is that about?
Okay, some of those are misleading, and, and, I mean, if you want to get with me later, I can show you. So what happens sometimes is they're picked up on a traffic offense, let's say it's an outstanding warrant, they haven't paid a Class C ticket, but then there's other holds, there's other warrants, and for whatever reason, it just enters it in as the one thing that they got picked up on. But I guarantee you, the people who are labeled traffic offense, eighty-seven days in jail, are not just in on a traffic offense.
Well, I would hope so.
Yeah.
And I, and another one, credit card abuse, somebody's not paying their debts, I mean, in a hundred and ninety-six days, I guess there's more to that, too?
Well, credit debit card abuse, even if it's a low amount of money, is a state jail felony. So if, if you take my credit card or debit card and use that to order a pizza, that's a state jail felony. So, and then some of those people maybe have felony priors, and they might be enhanced, and, you know, they're not getting a probation deal, or else they'd probably have pled it already, so they're looking at going to state jail or worse. So that's why they kind of hold.
So these, these are all, and I appreciate the information, as Mr. Ferris has brought up, these are all questions that I, me as a taxpayer, I'm interested in, because just, I'm just looking at today's report, I'm counting sixty-one females, I'm counting sixteen that are listed, if you, if a citizen out here just pulls it up, it's just going to show traffic offense, and I've got twenty-nine violations of parole. And the parole violations, could that, are they all, many of them process crimes by just not showing up, or what kind of, can you give an overall view of what parole violations might be?
Well, I mean, usually you got to mess up bad to get parole. I mean, they, they leave, they give a kind of loose leash, in my opinion, and so, once you've messed up with parole, I mean, they can hold you, and I'm not an expert on, you know, how they process blue warrants, and how they, you know, trigger that, and who they ship back to prison and whatnot, but, so that might be a question for a parole officer that would answer that better than I can. I, I would just say, as a general thing, people ask me about the jail pop, and our office has really not that much to do with the jail pop. The people who are arrested, because I prosecute misdemeanors, people who are arrested on a misdemeanor, generally they bond out if it's just a misdemeanor. And, you know, the bonds are low, you know, they might be a fifteen-hundred-dollar bond or something, they post the bond, they get out. I look, usually about once a week, I just go through top to bottom, and I see anybody who is in just on a misdemeanor, and it's evident that they're not going to bond out. And I try to reach out to the lawyer, there should be one appointed, get the case quickly, try to process it, try to get it pled. Sometimes, I'm frankly doing a better job for these inmates than their lawyer is doing for them, which is an ironic twist, but I understand the pressure of the jail, so a lot of times, we're just trying to get a conviction on somebody's record, we're not necessarily trying to get them six months in jail on a misdemeanor. So sometimes I'm helping to move those along faster, sorry that was long-winded.
That's, that's okay, so, but, and I agree with you, most of the, most of the revolving door, I guess for lack of a better way to put it, regarding Class ABC misdemeanors handled by the county attorney, they're not going to be in there very long, on the average. So most of these inmates in this jail that are, are getting time in this, spending lots of time in this jail, too much sometimes, are third-degree felonies and up, and there's some very serious ones in there, of course.
Right.
So those are, all those are components, all those are components of how, what kind of jail population you got. And the other point, only other point that I want to point out in this today, right now, is the shipping out of prisoners. If we're paying, and I'm just going to use some numbers that were talked about yesterday, a hundred and five dollars a day for a prisoner to get shipped over to which county?
Johnson.
Johnson County.
Per day.
Per day.
The average is more like seventy-five, because we have some in E. Rath and Somerville.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll use the hundred, I've already worked my example up with a hundred and five dollars, so I'll go ahead and use it, and then we can take down, take it away from that. But it costs us, well, last time I talked to the jail, our jail person, we were at about, he was, he told us about seventy-one dollars a day to keep a prisoner here. And I'm just going to, to be round, I'm going to take it up to seventy-five dollars, which is a forty, the actual cost of sending a prisoner out, other than transportation, you got to tack that on, I, I agree with that, is forty dollars a day, roughly, unless, according to Ms. Samuelson, if you, if you're looking at the average. So we have to keep in mind that this number, this eight-hundred thousand or two million, or whatever number you want to put on, as a number to send prisoners out, that's money that we're not having to spend here anyway. So please keep that in mind on the, on the number, it's, on the numbers that we're talking about sending, costing the county to send them out, because it costs us money to keep them here, too. And you don't, you're not doing that when they're not here. So just, just throwing that out there, anyway.
If I could just do one more comment on the jail pop, so as you alluded to, the vast majority of our population are people on felonies waiting to have cases disposed of, some through parole, but most through their case in district court. And so it's been talked about, well, what if we added another district court, which I've heard that for years, and, I mean, it would cut down on the wait time, it would cut down on the jail population considerably if you had another district court, but then there's a question of where do you put that court? And now the DA wants more people, now the district clerk wants more people, now probation, and, I mean, all the people involved in that want more people, want more staff, and, so, I mean, you're going to lower one number, but you're going to shoot one number through the roof, so I don't know if that's going to save money, although it might be better for judicial economy, I guess.
Well, and the other part of that equation is that, is how long does it take the state of Texas, once they get convicted and processed, to go to TDC? How long does it take them to get them down there? Well, up until the last couple of years, they might not get here for a long time. I think the legislature has put a forty-five-day limit on that now, is that, does that sound right, forty-five days?
Mm-hmm.
And, and so if they don't get here in forty-five days, once they've been sentenced and processed to go down to TDC, then allegedly, the state is supposed to reimburse us back if they don't get them. Now, I don't know if that's happening or not, I don't know if that's part of our equation, but all those are moving targets to try to determine what, what's the best for the county as far as the jail's concerned.
Usually when, usually when I check with Eric and the sheriff, they, who's ready to move out, it's way earlier than forty-five days.
We don't have, the last time we had anybody that hit that forty-five days, that was during COVID, because they didn't want to move people around with the prison system. We haven't had that, it's normally just a couple, two or three weeks, by the time we get the paperwork processed from the district clerk, and then the prison finds them a bed, so we can get them out a whole lot sooner. It's not an instant thing when they get a conviction down the hall, and then we ship them out the next day, it's, it's a couple, two or three weeks, but it's, that's pretty much normal. We haven't went to that forty-five days in a long time.
Well, that's good.
Do we have any pending today?
I didn't check with Ron, I'm not sure.
I'll check.
We always have a few, because they are working pretty hard down there. The parole stuff that we were talking about, the blue warrants, there is two or three that, you know, they, they're up to no good, and we got a, a blue warrant, we can take them to jail on, they'll bring them to jail on that. But there's only two or three like that, because ninety-nine percent of the time, or ninety-seven percent of the time, they break all kinds of other laws. And on that report that you're looking at, yeah, I'm not really sure why they put a misdemeanor crime up first, instead of some of the bad stuff that they're being held on. But like the county attorney said, the misdemeanor crimes, they get in sometime throughout the day or night, get the bond set in the morning, make. get the bond set in the morning, make, make their bond and they're gone. And, um, we don't rarely have to worry about any of those unless they're sitting out time that Judge Haddock says, you got to stay in jail for your sentence, two weeks or 30 days or whatever. But there's really not even that many of those in there because then they work, uh, the weekend or schedule. So we have an upswing on the weekends and then they're down during the week so they can go out and work for paying their probation fees and things like that. So the, the people we got in this jail are people that are waiting to be, go before Judge Bufkin on felonies. So, and the, the reason I've always bring this to your attention, the court's attention is, you know, E-Rath County used to take more. They're getting full because they take other inmates from other counties plus their own. Somerville, they really can't take anymore. Johnson County still has had some extra room for like the females. But Parker County, they said, come and get them. Um, we tried to get the agreement with, um,
Oski.
Oski County, and we've never been able to take any there because they're full. And it's a small jail anyway. But that's the thing that really worries me is when they say, hey, I can't take them anymore, come and get them. And then I worry, where am I going to put them? So, you know, that's the reason I'm pushing for building the jail. Yeah, if I could find housing out of, out of county, um, like you say, sometimes that's, solves the problem, sort of. But I'm still responsible for them anyway. But it's get to the point where there's no place to take them. Tarrant County was taking them out to way out west.
Post.
Post. And then they didn't pass their jail inspections. So their court canceled that agreement. They got to bring them back. And where they're going to put all those inmates, I have no idea. So they got a bigger problem than I got. But anyway, so.
They're supposed to have their construction finished by the end of the year, but I haven't checked on that in a while. I have a couple of comments. Um, I have worked with Drew and Owen on that report. And what happens is, like you said, there's multiple, um, reasons why they're in jail. And if it could pick the highest one, and maybe there's some way that within the system, they could rank the, um, the reasons why they're in jail, what's the word I'm thinking?
Yeah, I'm not.
Rank them so that the highest level.
Take the highest crime.
Offense would show up on that report. Because when it switched from the old report to the new report, it went from, one person was in there for murder and then it showed up as something else. And you're like, okay, what happened? And it's because it's not, it picks the first one, not the most severe one. So if there's any way that we can change what's in Spillman or something to put a number in front of it, a rank in front of it, so that the, the most severe felon, or no, most severe offense would show up on that report, that, that might help. And then I know that there was some work with the, um, county court at law and the county attorney to try to move some of the cases, to share some of the load. And I know Judge Bufkin and Mr. Sinclair, DA Sinclair, have been moving cases at a faster pace than they have in past years. But if there, if we have some resources available, um, has there been any more discussion? Sorry, Matt, you just sat down. But has there been any more discussion with the county court at law judge and you sharing some of those cases to try to keep the, the momentum going?
Well, um, sorry to give a non-answer first, but we're getting a little bit off the agenda item topic. Uh, I'd be happy to have a workshop and bring all the players in. Um, but I mean, I think we're on 15, which is, take appropriate action to order calling a bond election. So I don't know.
All right, never mind.
I want to try to keep a little bit on point.
And motion's on the table.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I, that would be a great topic for a workshop at a later date. And I'd be happy to engage in those talks.
Okay. Then back on the bond election, on the expenses, um, I do have, uh, you know, there are some trade-offs because there, along with building a new jail, will come expenses for additional staff. And I have had, and other things, you know, increased electricity, increased water usage, increased groceries, all those things. But, um, I have had two wonderful citizens, Mr. Hafes and Mr. McIntyre, who must have had to leave, um, come forward and offer to do some extensive analysis with all the trade-offs. Because we will, as we go through this, um, process, as we build the new jail, we will ha, and renovate the old jail, we'll have to put, you know, find a place to put inmates that are in the old jail. So that's an additional expense. But after the jail's completed, we may be able to rent out those beds to other counties. So there's some revenue on that side. So they have offered to do what I would call a cost-benefit analysis, total cost of ownership type analysis. And they both have extensive backgrounds in financial analysis. And, and I think that'll be great for them to be able to bring that to the table so that we can see all the moving parts of this project and be able to give that to the taxpayers. One, just one more thing is on this, when we made the motion to, um, go forward with this, I don't think we included LEC. And I think we talked about this last time this came up. And Ms., Commissioner Eagle, did you go back and look at what your motion was?
Oh, oh, oh.
When you made the motion for the?
Yeah, it didn't include, it did not include the law enforcement center.
Okay. I just want to be sure we're following our procedures in that, um, if we didn't include it, is, is it, do we need to reword this order or is it okay to leave it in here?
Well, it's going to have to be specific when it gets on to the bond. But this is just setting the date for November 5th. I think we have to do that.
This is the actual wording that will be submitted.
Adopt an order calling for the bond election. The bond election will be more specific.
Is this not the order that's going to be placed before the?
We have Mr. Sabonis here.
Yeah.
And he's trying to get out of, get out of the back.
He didn't even want to come up to the, he didn't want to come up to.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Jim Sabonis with Hilltop Securities, the county's financial advisor. My suggestion would be to leave the language as is. I'm not your bond attorney, but I know when he drafts this, he drafts it very specifically to meet the Attorney General of Texas requirements for these type of elections. That being said, um, as he indicated previously and what I know by experience to be true, is that you can actually constrain what you spend the money by actions that the court would determine. And so my strategy would be to use the exact legal language that the Attorney General has pre-reviewed and approved. And if you choose to narrow your spending, do it by an action of the court.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That actually makes sense.
Okay. Did you make your motion?
I've already made my motion 30 minutes ago, sir.
That's what I thought.
What was it?
I thought somebody, a diet in the meantime here. Did we have a second?
Adopt an order calling for a bond election be held on November 5th, 2024 for the purpose of building a new jail facility of 209 beds and refurbishing the existing 192 after that is completed.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed 50 million.
Okay, did I hear a second? I second it. Okay, we got to move on. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries reluctantly, I guess, 5-0. All right, all right. Number 16, discuss and take appropriate action to accept the revised fee proposal from DRG Architects and authorized payment of $80,000 from Fund 55 to be used for Phase 1 services, quote, "pre-funding," unquote, listed in the proposal. Come on up, gentlemen. Y'all haven't been here enough. We miss y'all's smiling faces up here. I'm just waiting for y'all to increase that 80 to 90 or something up here.
No, sir.
Actually go to 70.
That's what I was thinking. Holder's empty.
All right. Okay, what do you got for us?
We're, Judge, Commissioner Wayne Gondak, DRG Architects, I thought Gary was behind me somewhere.
He's hiding back there someplace.
Yeah, he's back there close to the door or something. Um, we did go back after our last meeting and restructured our, uh, fee proposal based on the, uh, change in scope and the description of the work from the, just adding on the beds and deferring the renovation to the future and doing it all as one package of adding in the work for renovating the actual, uh, uh, existing jail and making modifications of that that would make it, uh, and I think somebody used an example. Uh, Commissioners, excuse me, Commissioner Samuelson, uh, we discussed it like we did on Medina County, uh, going back and adding on and then renovating to where the entire facility at the end of the project was fully functional and could be utilized for the full duration of the, the new project. So that was what was discussed in my recollection at the, the previous meeting and what we brought forward, uh, on our, our fee proposal. Uh, within that, uh, what we did was put a general description of that to have the 209-capacity addition. Uh, we did have a, a small office area addition there for some administrative, our sheriff's office space. Uh, and then we did have a renovation and addition of the jail, uh, uh, to bring that up, include it, bring the jail functionally up to that compatible of the, the jail additions to include a new and fully renovated kitchen, expanded intake and processing area, expanded vehicular saliport, and fully refurbished inmate housing areas. So that was the, the description that we were looking at to look at that, uh, budget and definition there. We did also provide you an updated budget with that fee proposal. Uh, we did establish the, the budget for the, the jail addition, uh, the, uh, sheriff's office, uh, addition or improvements there, the interior renovations. We did set the interior renovations at the, the $15 million for a total, uh, construction cost, actual construction cost of the $41,964,800. Professional fees of a little south of 9% for the architectural, mechanical, electrical, structural, civil, surveying, environmental, soils, fire safety. Uh, all that lumped together was about, uh, a little 8.8%, I think was what that came out to be of 3.8 million. Uh, that was, I think that also included a, uh, materials testing. That's not part of our fee proposal, but really is carried within the construction. And then we did provide a contingency in here of about 10% within this, uh, project. That right now is not anticipated to be, uh, utilized, but it is prudent to have a contingency in this project you know, uh, for, uh, both on, on the design end, but also on the construction end. So as you make decisions in refining the scope, uh, we can look at that contingency. But that is $4235,000. So if we look back at our actual fee proposal, we have broken that down into two phases of the actual pre-funding phase of $80,000. And then have, uh, kept all the additional fees for Phase 2, uh, actual design and construction administration services as a stipulated or fixed fee of $3170,000 supplemental services. And that includes for the civil engineering, all the other, uh, outside services there that are not, uh, customarily, you know, provided with the MEP instructional of $4,000 and $12,000 and then reimbursable expenses of $70,000. It's my understanding that y'all have the, the agenda item this morning kind of tied to the, the Phase 1, uh, services and that, you know, anything beyond Phase 1 would have to be brought back to Commissioners' Court to get authorization to do that. And we presume that that would be following a successful bond election. I know that I've kind of rambled through that pretty quickly. I'm open to any questions that y'all have, uh, on the revised proposal.
Anybody? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we accept the revised fee proposal from DRG Architects and authorized payment of $80,000 from Fund 55 for the use of Phase 1 services, pre-funding listed in the proposals as stated.
I hear a second. I second it. So a motion made by Commissioner Wilson to take appropriate action to accept the revised fee proposal from DRG Architects and authorized payment of $80,000 from Fund 55 to be used for Phase 1 services, pre-funding listed in the proposal, seconded by County Judge. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a, a question. Um, I'm just concerned, or I guess more of a concern, nothing, I mean, you come highly recommended. I mean, we've had multiple discussions with the Texas Commission on Jail Standards, you know, nothing about your services. But I'm not sure why we would spend $80,000 now when we're not sure whether the, you know, the tax, this is going to go before the taxpayers on November 5th. So I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, not knowing what the taxpayers will do. Um, so I just think this is premature to do this at this point. I mean, the first court after November, if it, November 5th, if it passes, then, um, sure. But right now, I feel like this is not the right time to go forward with spending the taxpayers' money on doing, you know, taking this project to the next step when we don't know what the taxpayers are going to say.
Richard, I, I hear you clearly on that. Uh, the Texas Board of Architectural Examiners, uh, does tell us that we are not to do free work, uh, that under our professional services, that, uh, we can donate to, you know, as far as our services to, uh, nonprofits and other things. But it's unethical for us to do free work, uh, in, in this field. We are performing services. We have performed services to the county up to this point in, in order to help assist the county in the planning process. The county is intending to, I would presume, to utilize some of those, uh, instruments of service, uh, some plans and some information that we've provided to you. What we are asking for you to do here is to compensate us for our time and services that we are doing up to this point and going forward. Uh, what we have done is, is basically worked contingents, contingently with, with the county in hopes of. And we've taken a gamble up to this point. You owe us nothing if we walk away here today. Uh, because we worked in, in a contingent basis. But if you intend to use those, that information and take our plans and present them, know it, uh, public meetings and say, this is what we plan to do, then it's only right and proper that we get compensated for the work that we put into putting those plans. Also, in our scope of services that we have talked about, that those plans do need some refinement so that we can, make sure that we can answer those questions in a public setting of, uh, how those, especially on the, the renovation portion, what exactly are, are we looking at? Because we did not take that any farther, other than the brief description I've laid before you today as to what would those improvements be within the, the jail? What would that look like? We have not produced any further, uh, drawings on that. Uh, so that's, that's where this really works at. And then to also, uh, be present and to provide the then to also be present and to provide those services of presenting those documents and answering those questions during a public meeting, our public meetings going forward.
So, do you know, I mean, if you were to present us a bill right now for what you've prepared and...
I have not gone back and looked at that, but what we, what I did in revising this was in anticipation of what we have done and what we have planned to do through the November 5th, that that is what that number is, is our cost, covering the cost of our services going forward.
You know, I had some questions about the timing on this also, and I think that you've really touched on what we need to know here. You guys are going to be available. This requires transparency. The voters absolutely need to see the need, and they need to see how all of this is actually going to work. So, I think that you're being available to answer these questions ahead of time to show that transparency, to be able to lay it all out there on the table and say, "Here's what we're looking at. This is exactly what your money is going to do." I think that you guys end up being pretty instrumental in that process before the bond election.
It's the same as a school district to set up a bond package, that you have a Phase One bond package, or sometimes that you set up a prototype school design even to come and say, "This is the type of design that we are going to build, you know, either one or more school site adapted." But there is work that goes in there. Many times, within your budget, that you place a budget for planning of a facility for, you know, a year or so ahead of time. So, it is not unusual to pay for professional services prior to a bond election. And in fact, my recommendation is always to make sure that you have plenty of planning in the process. We have, you know, both under, right, what we've done in the last few months and under the previous program where you had, you know, the AGCM came in and did an assessment or whatever, we assisted them on some of the programming end of that. The decision-making was a little bit different on that. But in looking at that, we have, you know, taken that information that was gleaned out of that on their assessment of the building. We've reviewed that, processed that. But we've also taken and applied some of the information that we have done previously here with you and applied, they've been able to utilize that to come up with some of the information for the schematic design or the conceptual design for what you have now. We've also, you know, worked with the, you know, the sheriff's information that they provided during that programming phase to be able to look at, you know, what were the needs that need to be met, to be able to look at the existing facility and apply that program to that, to come up with some brief descriptions here. So, there is a process that we are applying to this in the planning phase that needs to be done. To go out to the public and say, you know, as mentioned earlier, about the $50 million is a pretty round number, and it is. But even on the budget that we have now, that the contingency sort of rounds off that $50 million, and we've really applied some very specific numbers, you know, as far as, you know, square footage and dollars per square foot right now to get to that point.
Part of what I see in every one of these we've been involved in is the education of the voting public. People are visual. They want to see what you're talking about. There's not numbers on the screen. So, part of what we're doing is presenting the plan, a layout on boards, PowerPoint.
Hey, speak into the mic, would you?
I'm Gary Adams. What we present to the public in our public meetings and also through the newspaper, whatever, are the plans, what this is going to look at, like when it's complete. So, we would show the new part, and then we'd show the renovation in the old jail, and it starts to make sense. We can talk all day about what it's going to look like, but people want to see, and we can explain, you already have the property, you already have the layout, the utilities are there, all those things are benefits. So, all the money we're spending on this jail is going directly into the jail and not other things. So, people want to see what they're voting on. This will be in the, whatever presentation material you come up with, the handouts or whatever, you'll have what it's going to cost, and the bond people take care of that. You know, the average home is this much, and it's going to raise your taxes this much. But on the same sheet of paper, they're seeing what that money's going for. So, that's where we are here. And we will make the public meetings with you, and you are required to have some so we can put on a presentation and show the people and answer the questions that they have. Because this is kind of complicated. If we were building a brand-new jail, it would be pretty simple. But what we're doing is building on to a jail, and our plan is to, like we've talked about, we build the new part and then go back into the old part and pull those inmates out and do the repairs that are necessary.
Similar to Medina County?
Yes.
So, the reason that I'm a little confused about this document and your explanation is it says this proposal is based on an assumed start date of Phase One services is September 1st, but you're saying the $80,000 covers work you've already done. So, that's a little confusing.
Well, we're going, the September 1st was to allow for a contract to be put in place.
Okay. So, and then the, in the paragraph, the beginning paragraph, it talks about a PDM, not to exceed allowance, reimbursable expense in the amount of $50,000. Is that, what is that?
A PDM?
Yeah. A not-to-exceed allowance can be established for travel and printing, reimbursable expenses in the amount of $50,000. Is that in addition to the 80,000, or is that part of the 80,000? What is that?
What page are you on? I thought I, I thought we had, we had said that we were going to put an amount in there, but, okay.
So, as, so assuming that between, in this first phase, September 1st through November, you are going to be traveling back and forth?
Okay. Yeah, for travel, typically on the travel reimbursement, if we include that and not part of the lump sum fee, that is the actual cost plus 10%. I have that 50% there, I have $50,000 there, and then $20,000 for the accessibility review. That is in the $70,000 under reimbursable expenses down there at the bottom.
So, you'll be, so here's why I'm confused. We say that this is Phase One services, pre-funding for $80,000, but you're going to be traveling between now and September 1st and November. So, are you not going to bill us for the travel and printing expenses during that?
Commissioner, at this point, y'all need to get this project moving. I don't want to nickel-and-dime the county.
Well, I just want to know what we're approving.
Well, y'all have it on the agenda to approve up to $80,000. We have offered an $80,000 stipulated sum. I can stand here and say, "We can write that to be all-inclusive up to the pre-funding phase." I have no problem with that. The $70,000 of reimbursable expenses can be after y'all fund the project.
The rest of it, okay.
I want to make it as clear as possible. That's why I went back and put the $80,000 under the Phase One.
I think that, as long as our auditor is understanding that the billing for any travel that happens during this first phase, what, won't be billed until?
No, we can defer anything, any other costs until after the funding.
And then, so as you...
That would be contingent also upon the successful passage of the bond election, too.
Okay. And then, is the $80,000, it says here that the reimbursable, reimbursable expenses will be invoiced at actual cost. So, we're not, when we're approving the $80,000, we're not paying $80,000 right now. We're going to pay $80,000 as you bill.
I think what y'all are approving is a funding amount.
Okay.
Well, the $80,000 will be a stipulated, a fixed fee amount. In other words, that's, it will be, but we'll earn that in between now and November 5th.
Yeah. I just want to be clear to anyone who's watching or reads the minutes or watches afterwards, that we're not, the $80,000 is not being approved to be spent at this minute. It will be invoiced as you go.
Correct. We will invoice that as we're going. That'll probably be on a percentage basis of completion. In other words, per each month, we bill on a monthly basis. That's typically how the contracts are set up, that we bill on a monthly basis based on a percentage complete. So, we've got, you know, September, October, November, that we have three months that we'll be billing. So, somewhere around 30% or something each month is where we're going to be at on that $80,000.
Okay. And just as, I want to introduce you to Mr. Hayes and at some point, Mr. McIntyre, any volunteer services that you can glean from them would be very highly encouraged.
You know, typically what y'all just discussed on that, that usually gets, you know, thrown back at the auditor and the Commissioners Court says, you know, "Provide us, you know, all of that information," and then it gets juggled around a little bit as to the size of the facility, the insurance costs and all those things that go in there, utility costs, you know, going forward. And really don't, someone, you know, responsible on the counties and, you know, isn't past of that or really knowledgeable of that. I think, you know, that you have somebody that is willing to really kind of get their arms around that and to make that, you know, presentation to the county and the public, I think is a great, you know, thing.
We are very lucky to have such wonderful volunteers in our community.
Because that is also something that is always asked, okay, beyond the physical plant, what is operational cost going down the road on this? Because we know it's going to be much more than what you have now.
Right, exactly. Thank you. Okay. That was, I didn't know if anyone else had any discussion.
Anything else? If not, all those in, do we get a second?
Yes.
Yes, you did. I did. I had the second. It did, yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, sir.
Can we take a break?
What was that we voted on? No, I'm just kidding.
That two-hour mark.
No, no breaks.
Thanks, y'all.
I second your motion, Commissioner.
Take a break.
Yeah.
Okay. We are on number, item number 17, discuss and take appropriate action to approve JP-2 part-time employee to work up to 40 hours a week for the remainder of the fiscal year. This is to fill the loss of a part-time employee until the 2024-25 budget is approved. Okay?
Good morning, Judge.
How are you doing?
I'm great. How are y'all doing?
Living the dream.
Yes, sir. Sometimes it's a nightmare, but, as everybody, hey, it just is what it is. As everybody knows, I do have two part-time positions. One of them has been faithfully filled by Joe McFaulin as long as I've been here and even prior to me. The second position, we have a very, very hard time keeping filled. I don't know why, but since I have been in office for 18 months or so, 19 months, we've had four, we've hired, trained, and lost four part-time people in that position. We just cannot seem to keep it filled. That position is what helps us with our truancy's every year. That position basically does all of the paperwork for the truancy cases. Last year, we had 326 truancy cases, and those truancy cases require a lot of paperwork. I brought two files to show you just as an example. This is a typical small claim case. When it comes in, it comes in on e-file. Everything is automatically downloaded to the computer. The only thing we have to do is print it off, poke holes in it, put it in a folder, set it for court. These are one-parent and one-child truancy cases. Okay? Now, there's multiple folders there because a child was in court more than once. Those do not come e-file. They come email because the school cannot e-file. Therefore, those have to be printed off, scanned, then created a folder. Then everything goes over to the county attorney's office for their, for the county attorney's office to look at it, to say, "Okay, we can go forward with these because half of it is criminal." So, they have to say yes or no. And then it comes back to us. We create the citations. The citations are sent out by the constable, and then we have court. Then after court, we typically give them like 30 days probation to go to school, not miss any, you know, not miss any school, this, that, and the other. Then after that, the school comes back with more paperwork showing us whether or not the child did what the child was supposed to do. And then we have to bring them back in court again. So, it's a, it's a revolving door, and this one part-time position takes care of all of this. What I've asked for in the 24-25 budget, because Joe, my part-time person, wants to go full-time, I've asked to delete the two part-time positions and create a full-time position, and she is willing to work full-time. Until then, because I've been told we can't create a new position mid-budget, I am asking the court to approve her to work up to 40 hours a week, part-time. That means no benefits other than what she already gets until the 2020, 24-25 budget can be passed. And hopefully, I pray, that y'all see my need and allow me to change the two part-time to a full-time position.
Everybody sees that. Do I hear a motion?
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Can we do that?
Do what?
Take them to full, working full-time but call them part-time?
According, according to human resources, we can.
It's just going to be for a short period. That's why I said only until the end of this.
Okay.
I would not be up here asking if we didn't make sure.
It's a limited time.
It's for a limited time, yes.
And if for some reason that position wasn't approved full-time, she would go back to part-time.
And then I would have to find another part-time person, hire them, train them, and lose them again, yeah.
All right. So, with that, I'll make the motion to approve JP-2 part-time employee to work up to 40 hours a week for the remainder of the fiscal year. This is to fill the loss of a part-time employee until the 2024-25 budget is approved.
Okay. Motion, Commissioner Samson made a motion to JP-2 to approve a part-time employee to work up to 40 hours a week for the remainder of the fiscal year, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You got it.
I know you wanted to ask a question. What was it? Oh, no, no, no. Okay, you had that look on your face because you and I talked yesterday.
Hey, take your win and leave. Take your win and leave. I want to go to lunch. All right. Okay. Item number 18, discuss the status of an environmental hazard complaint at 3800 Mayberry.
Yes, thank you.
I saw the pictures.
Yes, thank you, Judge.
Let me go ahead. Come on up here.
Yeah, we've had some...
Explain the background to this.
Before we start this, can we get legal counsel's opinion if this is going to affect the case that we had?
Oh, okay. All right. Because I understand it's, y'all filed a new case in District Court, right? Okay.
Well, I'm not going to give any secrets away, or, I mean, I'd really rather not even weigh in. I mean, we have a case filed that's pending in District Court. We're awaiting a court date soon, but if y'all want to discuss it, you can.
Well, it's really to, just to hear from the folks that live out there.
Right. I mean, we understand its concern. That's why we filed the case, and that's why they pushed it, too. So, I mean, we're, we hear the concerns. We're moving forward. But if somebody wants to...
Okay. Well, with that clarification, I think the evidence is going to be pretty clear as to what, y'all are neighbors. Is that what the, oh, my God. Oh, well, let's get it through here. Patty Buck, you're the first speaker. Patty Buck, you're the first speaker.
Okay.
This is not a relative of yours that lives at 3800 Mayberry, is it?
No, sir.
Okay.
You can pass those down, too.
My name is Patty Buck, and I live at 3711 Mayberry. We built our home in 97, been there about 27 years, and based on the deed restrictions that we were given, and everybody was given when you purchase land or a home, we felt good about it. I can also provide a copy of that. And everybody has built beautiful homes, taken very good care of their homes, landscaping, and we have a bully in the neighborhood. And we are just at, what do we do?
Yeah.
We don't have an HOA. I have, I don't know that this is correct, but I understand that our only alternative is to go together, hire an attorney, and prove that what he's doing is not only environmentally unsafe, there's broken glass, there's, it's a daily thing. They bring in trailers of things. I don't know what they do. I honestly don't. They come, they go, they come, they go.
Looks like a thriving business to me, in junk.
Well, it is a business. It's a junkyard. And several neighbors are not here because they feel intimidated. You know, they live next door, and he's a frightening man. So, we understand that it's supposed to go in front of a judge. Commissioner Samuelson has been wonderful to help support us and do all she can without an HOA. But I'm not going to take away from some of the other people that want to speak, but it goes on all hours of the night. Fires at 2:00 a.m. to burn, you see the burn pile. They do it at night. We're thinking we're asleep, but we have numerous trees in the neighborhood, and we could all burn down. So, that's about all I have.
Everybody feels your pain on this. I hope you get some justice in district court.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Let's kind of do that.
I do have one other question. Is there a way for us to know when it goes to court, and are we allowed to attend?
You know, I think, Jeannie, you'll find out when it's on the docket, and you can let these people know, can't you, Ms. Stackes? You can let this through.
When the case goes.
When it comes to court, in Judge Bufkin's court.
They're welcome, as if they would need to speak with him.
Mr. Mills? The county attorney?
Matt, his name's Matt.
You know what's his name there? Matt Mills?
Jeannie, let me introduce you to Matt Mills.
They certainly can attend, and we may even want to call a neighbor to testify.
Yeah, yeah.
That might be helpful, because, you know, health department's out there once every few weeks or a month or whatever, but they're there every single day, so that might be more compelling testimony.
How will they know when it's, when the case is going to be called?
Just check in with our office and Jeannie's office, maybe weekly, until we have a date, and then we'll know pretty soon.
Okay, good. Well, I appreciate all your help.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, good. The second speaker is Carla Daniel.
Good morning. Mine will be short, Commissioners and Judge. My name is Carla Daniel. I've lived at 3709 Mayberry Road since 1997. I'm here to address the unreasonable and unacceptable conditions that over time have become a health hazard in my neighborhood. The piles of junk and debris that are left near the road could pose an immediate safety threat for children. Aside from the hazardous condition this property poses is a direct negative effect on our property values. I'm retired. I live on Social Security as my main income. My home value is extremely important to me and my future. Living three houses down from a junkyard will definitely decrease its value. There are numerous ways Mother Nature and time can work against us in maintaining our properties, but this problem is man-made, and it's one that can be fixed by doing the neighborly thing, cleaning it up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. The next speaker is Cindy Holly.
Hello, my name is Cindy Holly. Thank you for listening. We appreciate it. I live at 3710 Mayberry, which is, there's only one house in between me and that property. First, I want to say real quick, I don't sleep at night half the time, so I'm usually up 2:00, 2:30 to 4:30, 5:00, whatever. Sitting on my porch, watching my phone, drinking coffee. I see a lot that goes on. Okay, let me get to my paper here before I forget. Um, what else, wait. Okay, this is a literal junkyard. I relate it to the show Sanford and Son. I'm sure some of you know from way back like me.
If I remember that.
Which includes washers, dryers, mattresses, clothes, sofas, filing cabinets, refrigerators, piles of cardboard boxes, pallets, mowers, hot tubs, and more, along with a burn pile out back measuring about 15 feet in diameter at least. The fire department's been out there at least four times. The last time was approximately three weeks ago at 2:30 a.m. in the morning. I called them because I'm sitting on my porch, and I keep smelling this, you know, these odors, and then I'm like flipping my light on, and the smoke is just coming around the corner. So, anyway, they get out there, they, the fire truck comes down the street. They stop right before they get to their house, and they had to back that fire truck, huge fire truck, back it up down our street, which is not that wide. It barely accommodates two vehicles. They had to back it up all the way down our street to the next street, and if somebody's house was on fire past that point, oh, I'm sorry, you know, fires, people die in seconds, you know. That is a definite hazard. You have to have, you know, a passable lane for that. They also have left vehicles piled full of stuff, which all the vehicles we've ever seen are not registered, they're not, you know, legal, they don't have all the paperwork or whatever, stickers, whatever you want to call. They've also burned a hot tub, which is made of fiberglass out there. They've burned mattresses, which are used mattresses, they're not new mattresses, and, I mean, it's just, it's horrendous. I mean, it really is. I've never, never dealt with anything like this before. And God knows what else they do. I mean, I was told by one neighbor who's not here that that was their business, and I said, what are they, a trash business? You know, who's going to buy, you know, blankety-blank trash like that? Anyway, there's people in the neighborhood who have serious health issues. One is on oxygen all the time, and very rarely will you see him sitting out back on his porch with his wife because of that. Now, when you've got all this stuff sitting down here, and it rains, and you get mold and all this stuff, and I don't know about anybody else, I suffer from allergies, horrible anyway, it's just a nightmare. So, I'm asking if you would, last thing before I forget, they also have a travel trailer or slash RV on their property that this guy lives in, which I don't think is legal for our paperwork we have on our neighborhood either. He's been living there, helping collect this. So, I'm just asking if you please, please help us get rid of the junkyard in our neighborhood.
Is this in the city of Granbury?
No.
No.
It's Hood County.
Kind of across, you know where Membrino Elementary is? It's across the street.
Yeah. I mean, it's a neighborhood. It's, I mean, it's very disrespectful to me and to everybody that lives there, and it's a, it's an environmental hazard. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
But you should be sure to check with Ms. Stackes or with Mr. Mills, the county attorney, to find out when this case is coming up for hearing in Judge Bufkin's court, because Ms. Stackes said it's filed in the district court, so all of y'all come up there and be willing to testify. Yep, okay.
I have one that emailed me. If you've enlisted that one, is that something else?
No, that's it, that's all.
Okay. I also have an email from Kathy Fortson that she wanted me to read. She said, I'm concerned about the property located at 3800 Mayberry in Granbury, Texas. This property is not only unsightly, it is also unsanitary and unsafe. The hazards include fire, infestation with accompanying diseases, tetanus, sorry, tetanus from rust and sharp metal edges, child entrapment in the various abandoned household appliances. Our neighborhood is in a wooded area. The fire prevention restrictions on the Hood County website state that you cannot burn anything on your property other than what is grown or cut on the property. This homeowner has a burn pile located not only close to their home, but also close to their large piles of rubbish. They have burned household trash, garbage, and even tires, all of which are not permitted per the Hood County official website. There is also a restriction on when controlled burns can take place, and it states that all burning must be done during daylight hours, one hour after sunrise and one hour before sunset. Fire marshal still here? Okay. All right, thanks. In the first week of July of this year, the fire department was called to extinguish a fire burning on this property in the middle of the night. As you know, the fire marshal put restrictions in place to protect residents from loss of property and loss of life. I'm very concerned that since they are not obeying these restrictions, that our neighborhood will at some point end up in the news for a devastating fire. The owner of this property is essentially operating an unlicensed junkyard or dumping ground in the middle of our neighborhood. They have numerous trailers along the roadside which block passage, especially while they are unloading with their ever-present, which is an ever-present worry, adding blocked routes creates an even bigger concern. Many residents living around this homeowner invested their life savings into a lakefront retirement home, and along with the safety concerns, are now stuck with this in their view. As you can imagine, selling is not an option as one, an option as one neighbor, no one wants a neighbor like this. Property values and quality of life are being affected in a detrimental way. Many of us are older and would rather not be dealing with this in our golden years. I hope that you will do anything within your power to correct this. Thank you for your time and appreciate anything you can do. Best regards, Kathy Fortson, 6212 Kelly Drive, Granbury, Texas. So, I want to say that since this was brought up, and there has been some movement, and now there's the court case, but also Mr. Head, who's our developmental director, has looked around at other counties, and we do have an option. Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. Well, this actually started a couple of years ago. It was a, there's a nuisance problem in another neighborhood, and I started drafting it back then, and it just kind of sat and got stale, and then when this came up, we looked back and that same statute that allows you to draft that order, which the county would have to adopt, allows for other types of things to be added to it, not just a salvage yard, so it could be a junkyard, resale business and all that. So, we drafted that, and there was another one. It was actually part of this one, but I split it into two, so y'all could pick from one. It's a nuisance vehicle abatement. So, but those are a long process, and there's some things that need to be ironed out, so we'll have to call a workshop and get y'all's contention on who administer these orders and just some fill-in-the-blanks. Matt and Mr. Quine's done, looked at my drafts, and they're ready. We just need a workshop to get them started, because there's a long newspaper, public hearing notice, requirement to have a public hearing for adopting these.
Thank you.
We have to, kind of like a replat, we got to set a public hearing and run it in the paper for 30 days, and then the last one being 10 days before the hearing.
Thank you.
Ms. Stackes?
Just so the audience from Sealy Ridge is here, counties do not enforce deed restrictions. That would be up to y'all. That being said, the Environmental Health Department, since the 1st of January, has investigated 913 complaints. That doesn't include the permits that we issue and the inspections on those permits that are made. We, since April 1st, we have had just under 450 cases sent to JP. So, when JP two stated, there's lots, there's lots, because in four months, my office has sent, like I said, just under 450 cases. In 2024, my office has filed for four separate injunctions. This case, a case on the property in question was sent, and a fine was paid February the 9th, 2024. We have very good JPs here. They are letting my office know, before we didn't know the outcome of the cases, but the JPs have been reaching out and giving us the outcome of the cases. That's the reason I can tell you, the people were fined at one time. We still have had minimal results, therefore, we're filing an injunction.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, I guess there's nothing that this Commissioners' Court can do right now. It's already pending in district court. Hopefully, that Judge Bufkin can issue some sort of mandatory injunction to do this. I guess you're going to be faced with the, of course, in my, in a normal person's deal, one man's junk is another man's treasure. You've heard that? I don't think that's even close here, but, you know, hopefully, you will get justice in the district court. I mean, that's, that's pretty bad. The only other thing I could do is that, you know, you file a complaint against him, and you take him to court, and he's fined $500, I guess was the maximum fine, and he doesn't clean it up, you can file it again. After a while, I don't know about, it doesn't look to me like that's a very profitable business that could stand seven times five a week, you know? Maybe it'd be enough impetus for him to clean it up, or her, whoever it is, but good luck to y'all.
And we will follow up, we will, Clint, I'll follow up with Clint on the other option. That won't be quick, but something we can do.
Okay.
I got to, you know, come on up. Because, you know, to me, if he's burning after hours outside the book, he ought to be cited by the fire marshal's office every time he does it.
That's what I was wondering.
Every time.
That's why I was asking, wondering if you were still here.
So, one thing I would like to add to the record. I heard the email where he's burning tires and after hours and all of that stuff. I've had a couple of calls to my office of them reporting that this activity is happening after dark, and my first question is, why didn't you call us? So, I, my office does employ people to have somebody on-call 24/7. It doesn't matter what time of day or night a fire is occurring, I have somebody that is available to respond. Where our issue with this is, we've not ever been called after hours to go and deal with them. I know I dealt with him two years ago on an unmanned controlled burn. When I got there, it was mostly brush. It did have some lumber in there. I issued him a warning. The last call we got called on was about two and a half, three months ago. My deputy, when he got out there, the fire was, was going on at 3:00 in the morning. The tenant, who lives in one of the RVs on the property, said that he didn't light the fire, that it must have been kids walking through the neighborhood at 3:00 in the morning. I would have to call the BS card on that one. However, I will tell you, with fires, it's very difficult to take a court, a case like that to court and say, well, we assume that he lit it, because they're going to want to... to see a picture with somebody with a match in their hand. So the thing of it is, anytime those fires happen, call us. We will be happy to go out and address it. I have somebody available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So it is a junkyard. I've noticed that for years. I wish I had teeth to do something about it, but just like when people call my office because their neighbor doesn't cut their grass often enough, there's not a whole lot I can do about it, unless he sets it on fire. If it's burning, I can address it, but I can't go out there just because it's unsightly. If that were the case, I would need about five more deputies, because there's lots of properties in the county that would need that attention. So.
All right, good to know.
For the record, what I'm asking is, when those fires occur, call us and let us go out and address it. That way, we have a record of it, and we can, we can take care of it.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, ma'am. Come on, you're going to have to come up and speak into the mic.
I want to disagree with his last statement. I did call the fire department. Actually, I had to end up calling 911, the police, because the two numbers I had for the fire department did not answer. And so there was a fire engine that came out there. I don't know where they were from, but that's what I was telling you about three weeks ago, that they had to, they came out there, they were not able to get past, they had to back that big truck down the deal. So I don't know where he is from or what count, whatever, but they were out there three weeks ago between 2:30 and 3:00 in the morning and could not get past, had to back their truck up and go around the other way. I just want to make that clear.
Okay.
I'm a witness to that personally.
So to that, my name is Jeff Young. I'm the Hood County Fire Marshal. That was pecan plantation that responded. Norm Tyndall was my investigator that went out and spoke with them. And that is the fire that I'm referring to. That's when the gentleman told us that kids walking through the neighborhood started the fire, and we could not physically, we have no witnesses that say we saw him light the fire, and that's the fire we're talking about. Norm did not mention anything to me about not having access down the road. They may have gone, drove past it and backed up, but it was a pile of building materials and stuff that was burning. Ma'am?
So if they called us in, are they calling to know, do they need to call 911 in order to have your office come out? And I'm asking, because this is one of the piles.
Right. You can see it on Google Earth.
Oh, and that's what I'm saying, just, I'm trying to, so they know
Who to call.
To get your office out there, what do we need to do?
911, non-emergency, smoke signals, whatever it takes. If we're driving down the neighborhood and we see a column of smoke that's the wrong color, we're going to stop anyway. But yes, 911.
Call 911.
Non-emergency. Either way, you got to call somebody that's going to dispatch us there. If you call me the next day and I go out and see a black pile, I can't say that, yes, Bob or whoever he is lit that fire last night, unless I have a witness that says, "I saw this dude go out there and light that pile on fire, and then he went and hid in his camper." Well, okay, at least now I can get a witness statement that will have some weight. But I can't, unfortunately, my business does not run well on assumptions. I can't assume that he was the one that lit the fire. And if his story is that kids walking through the neighborhood lit it, unless I have proof otherwise, again, we up, I pulled the BS card. I know that he was probably the one that did it, but until I can prove that, there's not a judge in this building that's going to take that.
Good luck to y'all, really. You're going to, yeah, be sure to go to court, though.
Yes.
That's going to be the big thing, okay? All right. Thank y'all for coming down, though, doing it. Okay. Okay, number 19. Discuss report on reconciliation status of credits owed to Hood County from Tyler Technology in the amounts of $107,052,325. Take appropriate action if necessary to prevent additional payments to Tyler until the reconciliation is complete and credit balance is returned to Hood County.
Yeah, so we had a follow-up call, I guess it was about a week ago. Really good discussion. Ryan Matkin from Tyler Technologies laid out all of the information that had been supplied by our county attorney and our IT department, and I think we're, we're very close. He's taken it up the, up the chain, because it's over an amount that he's authorized to do anything with. So it looks like in the end, it'll be somewhere around $130,000 to maybe $145,000 credit is what I'm expecting, but they're working. He just emailed me last night to tell me he wasn't quite ready with a number. He knew that we had a deadline, or that we had court today, and we're wanting to give a final answer, but we don't have that yet. He's sending up the change, so I don't know if there are any pending payments, but it would, it would create some inconsistency if we were to pay them when we've got this kind of set schedule that we're working towards. So do you have any comments on that?
No, we just have those, the two items that we discussed in that call.
Okay.
And that's all that I'm aware of so far.
So, all right, so we'll just, I don't think we need to take any action. It looks like we're really close, and I think they have really good intentions of fulfilling, of making us whole based on, making the county taxpayers whole based on what was paid for a product that didn't work. So it's really, I mean, it's good. I think that they're working with us on that.
Mr. Ferris, you want to address this?
I'll ask this.
Thank you. Okay. Number 20. Discuss and take appropriate action to offer a specialized individual universal life product to employees as a payroll deduction effective October 1, 2024. Ms. Welburn?
Yes, good morning. I visited with Mr. Kreider. He is the one that brings our ancillary benefits to us, to the county, the employees. And so this is a whole life product that the county employee can take out on themselves, a spouse, or even their children and grandchildren. So we just want to offer it up. I've got Mr. Kreider here that can answer any questions, if you have any, about the product. You receive the pamphlet that he provided me. It's just another option. I told Mr. Kreider, we probably won't have a ton that take it out the first year. Sometimes it takes a little bit of employees talking about something and kind of playing it up with each other before we see a good turnout, but it's just a product that employees can pay for and take with them if they separate from the county.
Good. Good. You want to tell us? I guess you've got it on a sliding scale for some of us that are just mere teenagers like myself.
Well, I guess just want to speak briefly. My name's Andy Kreider, Kreider Insurance, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Yeah, this is just a product, you know, the county offers term life insurance. It's really designed to protect an employee while they're an employee. This is a permanent life option that they can take with them when they leave the county, at the same price, the same coverage. If they want to keep the term coverage, it converts to an individual plan, and the rates, they'll pay the rates when, at the age when they leave the county. So as a result, when they want to keep the term life insurance, it's quite a bit more expensive. This just gives them an option where they know exactly what they're paying, and they keep it as long as they want the coverage, so.
Ah, that's pretty good. That's good.
Yeah, I like it because it is a permanent life product. It's not designed to build cash value, so it's less expensive for the employee than traditional whole life. That's why we call it a specialized, especially universal product. Just makes it more affordable on payroll deduction.
Is there an enrollment?
There's no minimum requirement. No, sir.
Well, yeah, in other words, let's say if somebody's got a $25,000, is there a period where you could take, take it to 50 or 75 or something like that without any, you know, open enrollment or what have you?
There's basically three health questions. Have you been, have you been actively at work? Are you actively at work? Have you been off five days of work? Or do you have a history of cancer or substance abuse? Are pretty much the only, the only knockout questions, and they just want additional information. If you answer a yes to one of those questions, it's not an immediate cancellation or termination. But it's really an individual contract, so if they want to increase it at a future time, they're actually buying a secondary contract, because it is an individual contract for that amount. So somebody could buy $25,000 this year, come back next year, buy an additional $25,000, it would just be listed under additional contract. But it'll be one payroll deduction. Did I answer your question?
Well, the only other, I'm still a little bit unclear. So let's say an employee right now has $25,000 when they enrolled. Is this to, is this, if you want to do this, is it rolling that over to the, pick up the, trade that one for this one, or?
That would be the employee's option. I mean, you know, they're definitely able to keep the term life, they're able to enroll in the new product, or do both.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, thank you for bringing that option to the county.
And what is the, how would, if this is approved today, would there be a sign-up period, or will you just have information sessions?
It would just be at our regular, cafeteria enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
Cafeteria plan enrollment, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
I'll make the motion to approve the offer, to be able to offer the employees a specialized individual universal life product to employees as a payroll deduction effective October 1, 2024.
Second? Okay, Commissioner Samerson has made a motion to offer, the county to offer a specialized individual universal life product to employees as a payroll deduction effective October 1, 2024, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Item number 21. Discuss implementation of the fund policy, fund balance policy, and give direction to the county auditor on funds available to designate as restricted, committed, and assigned fund balance based on the current balance and unassigned fund balance. That's a good solid.
Right. I put this on here because it, we're, you know, based on our, well, I already had it on there, because I knew we were in budget season, but, you know, we had some discussion yesterday in our workshop about what amount should we put into capital and what was going to be moved from fund balance into supplement the revenue side, if any. And I just think we needed to know what, what the amount was, so that we could have some informed decisions there. So I know that Ms. Mallock has been super busy with the budget, so I'm not sure you've had an opportunity to, to address this or not, and if not, we can table this to our next workshop.
So I did look, and we have $30 million in cash. We owe 6.6 in liabilities. That leaves us about 23.4. So if we're looking at the budget, I mean, these are just round numbers. I don't have exact numbers, because yes, I have been a little preoccupied. So if we're looking at a reserve each month of 3.5 million times four, that's 14 million, so that minus 23.4, I'm going fast, sorry, that leaves about 9.4 outside of the four month reserve. But I do want to stress the cash flow situation, because we do only get a huge lump sum in about January. So if you, it's one thing to allocate as a reserve and keep it in savings, and then say, "Okay, we're holding this extra for some project down the road." But I just want you to make sure you're thinking through the revenue cycles that we have here. Every business, government, whatever, operates on their specific revenue cycles, and ours tend to happen once per year. And so if you, in October 1, designate the expenditure of this additional reserve, or unrestricted, or however you want to label it, that may have a consequence of a cash flow concern. So please, while you're making these decisions, consider that in your direction.
What was the second number? You said that the 30 million minus six was what?
That's the outstanding liability that I need to research a little further.
Okay.
So out of that 23 billion, it's none of it's assigned or committed? It's all unassigned fund balance?
So I could not find any record of the designations or what, what they're held for, so it would be wise for you guys to review that and decide how you wish.
Absolutely.
So in going forward, I would, if you are going to make these delegations, that we actually make notes on the financial statements, so that we know what your, the intention is. So say, you know, 14 million in reserves, which is that four-month holdback, which is adherent to the policy, and then we would indicate clearly that this is our reserve per the policy. And then if you're going to allocate that 9.4, it's towards the jail project, towards road development, or however you wish to designate that. It would be helpful if that is actually notated somewhere, so that looking back, you can say, "Okay, that 9.4 was set aside for the next three years to accumulate towards a new justice center, or an additional building, or however you wish to allocate that."
I mean, didn't we just vote on the fund balance?
Yeah, this is the policy. So she's saying that the 14 million would satisfy the 35%, which is what we agreed to, and that during this budget cycle, I feel would be a good time for us to determine if the other amount would go with the 9.4, should that go into a committed to something or assigned to something, as she made some suggestions for that, remembering that they can be, we would have to vote on that, and so that would be a record, that we would say, for example, 6 million of this is going to be designated to X project, and that, we would have to put that on the agenda and vote on it, and then it would go into committed fund balance. And I think that we just need to keep that in mind as we go through this budget cycle and the upcoming capital projects. This is something that we need to take into account, because the 14 million, and we probably, I don't know, at the end of this budget cycle, the fund balance will probably change on October 5, or whenever you close the books on, on September 30. So we might want to readdress it, the second quarter in October or something, give you some time to, to know what that is. But that's why I put it on here, because we are in the budget cycle, and we were talking about, do we have reserves? If we need the reserves, how much can we use of the reserves to supplement the tax, the property tax? Those kind of questions that we had the other, yesterday. That was just yesterday, wasn't it? Yesterday, so.
But there's still some, some uncertainty with where exactly those funds are, there's some committed that, is that what you're saying? That there's still, you're still trying to research this and figure out where all the?
There's still more effort to be put into it, especially when we talk about from the budget perspective, because Fund 55 is partially funded by our reserves, or it has been in the past, so it will be up to y'all to determine how we go forward, but there are definitely more than just this simplified view of it, that there's more to it.
And we were, at the point that we get our audit report for this fiscal year, that may shed some more light onto what this, what's in reserves. So I don't, did I say take appropriate action, or just discuss?
Discuss. Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I don't have any, there's no, there's nothing to look at with this. Anyway, yeah, we've talked about it.
Yeah, it was just, as everyone knows, we can't just sit and talk about this without being in an open meeting, so I just think it's a good idea for us to get a good handle on where we are with our fund balance and in compliance with our policy. And I think we're making, thank you, Ms. Matlock, because she's making good progress towards that.
Well, what I would suggest is, in the past, we've Well, what I would suggest is, in the past, we've retained six to seven months as backup, and maybe we look at the last three or four years as how this was allocated in the past, and then we can put some numbers to each one of these. Because I refrain from, I was, I'm not sure assigning it to something if we don't need to yet. We just need to talk about it. But we need, for me, I need numbers in front of me and maybe some history, if that's possible.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. You go and get some numbers for us, so, okay? Soon as we get through it, this immediate pressing stuff then, okay? All right. Item number twenty-two. Discuss and take appropriate action to set the amount of cybersecurity coverage through Texas Association of Counties effective October the first of 2024. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon.
What does, what did TAC say about, what does most counties get? Half a million, million, two million?
I think a half a million is probably something that a county might do if they don't have all of the requirements in place. I doubt very many counties are going with the half a million. Sorry. We currently have the million in place. That's currently what TAC has offered, and we just paid for it through our public officials' amount. But this year, they're moving away from that, creating their own policy for cybersecurity. They know a little bit more about it. People are utilizing it a lot more than they have in the past, unfortunately, and they anticipate counties using it a lot more moving forward. I heard somebody say the other day, at the end of the year, it won't be, well, we weren't compromised. It will be, we were only compromised twice this year. That's what they anticipate.
Well, because of our record, I mean, Hood County has never been compromised, have they?
No, sir.
So this is like a driving record, isn't it? If you're not, have a DWI, if you hadn't been in any accidents, I mean, your premiums should be somewhat lower than, say, counties like, unfortunately, some of our neighbors have been hacked. Do you know what the premiums are?
I don't know about other counties' premiums, no.
Okay.
But like she said, it's not, it's not if, it's when, and, I mean, I don't know if y'all were watching last night, but even Elon Musk's, as much IT infrastructure that they have, they got a denial of service yesterday.
Wow.
And so.
You know, it's probably once a month I get a letter from some corporation that lets me know that my information's been compromised. I told my husband the other day, I said, this is like a routine letter that they're sending out now.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got eleven email notifications in church Sunday morning that my, something was going on with my stuff personally.
And why are you having your phone in church with you? Just asking.
It was, well.
You're fire, fire chief.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a question. So on these costs, the big, the black line, the two-hundred-and-eighty-four, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven, and two-hundred-and-ninety-two, most of that is already budgeted for renewal of insurance we already have.
It is, and I budgeted for twenty thousand of cybersecurity.
Okay. And then, so the addition would either be the twelve thousand, three hundred, the fourteen thousand, eight seventy-six, or the twenty thousand, four eighty-nine?
That's correct.
And you said you budgeted twenty for the upcoming budget?
Yes.
So the difference between one million and two million in this cybersecurity is about five thousand, six hundred dollars?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then I would want you to definitely pay close attention to the deductible of Ten thousand versus twenty-five if we had an event.
In other words, the two million would cost us forty-six thousand before we ever got into it, right?
That's correct.
Right.
And what is, what do you speculate the money would be spent on? Just, I mean, I'm not, where does the liability, where does the liability come in?
You're talking about what TAC would spend? Okay. I believe, based off of the last situation that we had, they do call in contractors, for lack of a better word. If we were compromised to the point where information was actually taken, they bring in an organization that would send out letters to everyone that had information in our system, notifying them of the extent of their information being compromised, to what level. Things like that is what they actually spend the money on.
So in the event that there was some type of breach, they would be called in to help mitigate the breach, recover from it, and then notify anybody?
That's correct.
You know what, like, E. Rath of Parker County has? You don't?
I don't, unfortunately. I do not. This is all new for everyone, so.
Have you got any kind of recommendation on them? Or did you make one and I didn't hear it?
No, sir, I haven't made a recommendation. We could always stick with what we currently have, the million-dollar coverage.
Then million, million dollars, if you figure the deductible, we're going to be out of pocket twenty, about twenty-five thousand.
That's correct.
Before we ever do anything.
Correct.
And that's what we got now?
That's correct.
And we have invested in the multi-factor authentication, so that's going to protect us from, well, it should deter, although the hackers are always one step ahead, but it should help deter any attack that might happen. So that might offset going with two million. And so, does anybody know how much Granbury spent trying to recover from their attack?
I don't have a clue. I have to wonder if they've even been able to come up with a solid number yet.
Maybe we should just keep what we do have. I mean, it's, we haven't used it, but it should come down to it, I guess. That's why you have insurance, is to kind of delay the deal.
It's like I tell all employees.
I make a motion that we accept the million-dollar coverage.
Second that.
Motion made by County Judge, accept the million-dollar cybersecurity coverage, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. This brings us down to consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to discuss, pull anything, or do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second by Commissioner Wilson? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to Roman numeral nine. Business to be discussed and considered for approval of subdivision roads in Platte, Road Ops, Mr. Donald Lenny. Approved certification of the county maintained road mileage for Hood County Road System. What is the amount of roads we have, Mr.?
It is four-hundred-and-sixty-eight point four-one miles.
Okay.
In your packet is the actual, the last page is showing what we pack in here, or lots, which within this time period, since August 20.3 up to July 31st, 20.24, we take in three-point-eight-three miles of road.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the certification of the county maintained road mileage for the Hood County Road System as of July 31st, 2024.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the certification of the road mileage for Hood County Road System, as stated, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lenny.
Thank you.
Okay, development. Mr. Clint Head, set a public hearing for the replat of Stroud Creek Estates, Section Four, Lots Fifteen R, Sixteen R One, and Sixteen R Two. What's the date?
September 24th.
September 24th. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we set a public hearing for the replat of Stroud Creek Estates, Section Four, Lots Fifteen R, Sixteen R One, and Sixteen R Two for September 24th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Andrews to set the date of September 24th, 2024, for the replat of Stroud Creek Edition, Section Four, as stated, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five one. B. Discuss, five zero. Discuss and consider the final plat of White Edition, Lots One and Two, Block One, Precinct Three.
This property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct Three. The final plat will be subdividing a six-point-zero-three acres tract out of Martin Setzer Chevrolet Abstract Number 502, creating two lots. Lot One will be a two-point-three-two-two acre lot. Lot Two will be a three-point-seven-one-six. Lot One is served by private well and onsite sewage facilities. Lot Two could connect to Southwest Water or obtain a well permit from the opportunity and will be served by onsite sewage facilities. This property was in the CCN of City of Granbury, but they sent me emails saying it was being decertified and will no longer be in a CCN. There is no infrastructure proposed to be constructed with this final plat and will be accessing the existing Mustang Trail. Staff has reviewed the final plat and all comments have been addressed.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the final plat of White Edition, Lots One and Two, Block One.
Second? Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the final plat of White Edition, Lots One and Two, of Block One, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Head. Financial. Mr. Steph, Ms. Stephanie Matlock.
We have eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and fourteen cents of invoices. My office has reviewed them all and recommends payment.
Okay. Who wants to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion, we pay the bills in an amount of eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, three-sixty-five, fourteen cents.
Second.
Yeah, a motion made by Commissioner Andrews to pay the bills in the amount of eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and fourteen cents, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Item number two. Acknowledge and accept the 2024 review of the Constable Precinct Four financial records.
There were no findings, and this is part of our normal annual reviews of all of the offices. You'll be seeing more in the coming days.
Recommend approval, huh?
Recommend, yes. Recommend your approval.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to accept the 2024 review of Constable Precinct Four financial records.
Thank you.
Been made by Commissioner Samuelson to accept the 2024 review of Constable Precinct Four financial records, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.